Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Durham City Hall. Welcome to the chambers. Time is now 7:00 PM, and I will call this meeting to order and ask that you join me in Thank you. I'll now pass it over to Councilmember Freeman for a moment of silence. Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. It's our practice to stand and salute the flag if you'd like to join us.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Rist.
Here.
Well, now, I'll start with our ceremonial items. It is October, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I'll ask Councilmember Caballero to lead us in a proclamation.
If I could have Richard Averitt from the American Cancer Society, if you want to come up here and join me while we read the proclamation.
Hey, Richard. Good to see you. Come on up.
So, this is the proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas far too many Americans face the shock of a breast cancer diagnosis each year, many of us know someone or have family members who have battled cancer. One in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime, including an estimated 320,000 in the U.S. this year, and one in 833 men will be diagnosed, including about 2,800 new cases. And whereas the American Cancer Society created by making strides against breast cancer to unite communities, companies, and individuals with the shared goal to end breast cancer as we know it. The movement celebrates courage and hope, bringing together survivors, thrivers, caregivers, and advocates to save lives. And whereas access to screenings and early detection are vital in fighting breast cancer, the American Cancer Society provides nationwide tools and support, including 24/7 helpline and online resources connecting patients, caregivers, and families to critical services. Because of increased screenings, early detection, and better treatments, mortality rates have declined and survival rates have improved. And whereas Making Strides remains the nation's largest and most impactful breast cancer movement, supporting survivors, thrivers, caregivers, and families alike, now therefore, I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Durham, and hereby urge all residents to support the American Cancer Society in making strides against breast cancer of the Triangle in their mission to end breast cancer. Witness my hand in the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this 20th day of October 2025.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, and the audience. My name is Richard Averitt. I serve as the Executive Director of the American Cancer Society for Central and Eastern North Carolina. On behalf of our staff, volunteers, survivors, and caregivers, I want to thank the City of Durham for recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month and for standing with families across our community who are affected by the disease. In North Carolina alone, more than 6,600 women will be diagnosed with breast cancer this year, and more than 1,000 will lose their lives. But thanks to early detection, innovative research, and community support, survival rates continue to rise. Right here in the Triangle, the American Cancer Society provides free rides to treatment through our Road to Recovery program and connects patients and families to 24/7 support in over 200 languages through our national helpline at 1-800-227-2345. These vital services help ease the burden of cancer for families right here in Durham. We invite you all, all Durham residents, to join us this Saturday morning, starting at 8:00, at the Durham Bulls Athletic Park for Making Strides Against Breast Cancer. It's more than a walk, it's a movement of hope, resilience, and unity. You know, 30 years ago, I lost my mother to breast cancer. Grew up in eastern North Carolina, she was treated right here at Duke. But since then, we've had a 34% decrease in fatalities, and we have an ambitious goal. Thank you. And we have an ambitious goal in the next 25 years of a 50% decrease in fatalities. We're going to win this war one day, and it's because of communities like Durham. Thank you again, Mayor, council. Thank you for your leadership, your partnership, and community to a healthier, stronger Durham. Together, we're saving lives and improving lives every day. Thank you for your support.
I'm now going to ask Councilmember Rist to join me for the next proclamation. All right, if you are a current student at my alma mater and associated with the tennis team, please join me up here. Just a quick, brief story. For you all students who don't know, I started a tennis team at my high school because we only saw people playing tennis on TV, and they were all white, and there were no black kids playing tennis. So, we started it, we sucked, but we wanted to, you know, have that representation. And we got better and better and better, and NCCU is one of the schools that offered me an opportunity to play tennis. However, it conflicted with band practice, and I chose band. So, I went to about five practices at tennis, and it just didn't work out, but I'm glad you guys are there now and you're winning championships. So, I'm going to ask Councilmember Rist to come down and read this proclamation, but I wanted to stand with you all tonight. Congratulations, congratulations. I know people usually invite the basketball team and the football team, and that's it, but you guys are rocking it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The mayor knows I'm a committed tennis player. I've played against Curtis Lawson, enjoyed some matches, and like John McLean here is one of the premier tennis instructors I know, phenomenal teacher, John. Thank you for all the coaching you've given me, he's amazing. So, I'm so honored to read this proclamation tonight. Whereas on September 18th through 21st, the 2025 HBCU National Tennis Championships were hosted at the renowned South Fulton Tennis Center in Atlanta, Georgia. And whereas on September 21st, 2025, the North Carolina Central University Men's Tennis Team captured the HBCU national title with a total of 82 points. Whereas the finalists, Alabama State and Tennessee State, finished with 57 and 52 points respectively. And whereas NCCU's Naresh Barathi was the Flight B Singles Champion. And whereas NCCU's Naresh Barathi and Antonio Pankowski were the Flight B Doubles Champion. And whereas this is the second HBCU national title that the North Carolina Central University Men's Tennis Team has captured, the last title being won in 2014. Now therefore, I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as NCCU Men's Tennis HBCU National Champions Month in the City of Durham, and hereby urge community members to celebrate the accomplishments of this hometown team. Witness my hand in the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this 20th
Good evening. I would just like to briefly give a very special thanks to my coaching staff, Coach John McLean and Coach Gabriel Cucalan Jacquez, and each of our players, beginning with our seniors, Kareem Abdul-Hakim from Indonesia, team captain, Neiman Swag Sneed from Augusta, Georgia, senior Luke Lucas Ardigus from Cary, North Carolina, sophomore or junior, Leo Nardo Fortier Garibi from Montreal, Canada, Anthony Pankowski from Gorah, Poland, senior Rodrigo Alves from Portugal, co-captain Naresh Barathi, Mithran Barathi from Tamil India, and our volunteer assistant, Ms. Adrian Charleston, and our head women's coach, Ms. Sophia Rachey-Cucalan. And I thought it was important to recognize each of the members of the team and our staff by name because this team is very unique in that they embody the, just the essence of student athletes. What wasn't mentioned is that this team also was recognized as having the highest team GPA in the country for... And I'll repeat that again, in the country, so for all Division I men's teams, this North Carolina Central University team not only rocked it in the field of competition, but they are also excellent students. We're always very involved in the community as well, and so again, I'm just, I can't say enough positive things about just how proud I am of the team. I am so delighted that our mayor is also an alumnus, distinguished alumnus of our North Carolina Central University, and I just thank everyone for your support.
Eagle pride!
Applause.
This time, I will start to my left with announcements.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. Just a couple of short things, because I know we've got a full agenda. I just wanted to say a happy 160 years to Mount Zor. The church has been in that location in Merrick Moore for 160 years, which is incredible. So, I had the opportunity to go worship with them yesterday, oh my gosh, yes, yesterday? It's been a long day. Yesterday, and was so grateful to be welcomed into that space, and just immensely grateful to spaces like Mount Zor and others that have existed as pillars in our community for a long time. So, I just wanted to shout them out. I also want to say that early voting has begun. We've talked about this a lot, but I know it's not as sexy as a federal election, but your local electeds up here, you're all here, so you know that we're doing the work. But we are responsible for land use decisions and for local ordinances and resolutions and all of these things that actually really impact local folks' lives in a way that I think federal elections don't really touch. So, do remind your friends to go out and vote, please go cast your own votes. Would love to see Durham in a blue moon election shattering the voting record. So, I hope you will all go out and vote, and those are my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker.
I'll be brief as well. Talk a lot about the UDO. The Unified Development Ordinance is the DNA that shapes the world that we live in. We don't own the means of producing our city for the most part, but we do own the DNA that shapes the way that our city gets built over time. We only update the Unified Development Ordinance a couple, two, three times per century, so each of these opportunities to rewrite our Unified Development Ordinance impacts generations to come. So, these are important moments. So, tomorrow, the consultant team is virtually presenting Module Three, their third grouping of updated regulations. You can find that information on EngagedDurham.com. They're presenting the Environmental Protection subdivision and infrastructure provisions. On November 13th, there's going to be an in-person meeting at the Durham County Administration Building, and November 18th, there will be virtual meeting. There's also office hours, which you can find those dates and times on EngagedDurham.com. So, please plug in and pay attention and engage with that. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Caballero.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just a few announcements. Last week, I was able to be at a conference, really a summit for Latinx Ed. They're the largest Latino student success nonprofit in the state of North Carolina. It's one of the largest gatherings of Latinos in the state of North Carolina every year, and so it was really a wonderful experience to be with them last year. I will say, you know, it's getting harder and harder for folks. We opened our session with lots of conversations around safety. It was incorporated into the summit in a way that hadn't had to be before because there were so many folks with mixed documentation status in their families or as participants. And it was a very joyous celebration, but also very sobering because of so many attacks on immigrant communities in this moment. So, I just want to lift up all of the organizers for that incredible summit, everyone who attended. It's something that gives me a lot of strength and joy when I do get to go. So, again, the organization is Latinx Ed. They're an incredible organization, doing work all across the state in service to Latino students. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just definitely want to make sure to acknowledge Breast Cancer Awareness Month, as I know it does touch a lot of women and men as well. And then also, congratulations to NCCU tennis team. I'm also an Eagle, so fortunate to have that in common. And just a big shout out for Indigenous Peoples' Day and Italian Heritage Day as well. I definitely want to make sure that I mention that early voting is now and that there are five locations, and the Durham Main Line Berry is not one of them. Please, 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 please make sure you figure out your plan and get out and vote. I also want to send a very hearty shout out to Mount Zor and acknowledge that they've been doing a lot of community engagement work, trying to make sure that people understand civics and ways in which I hope that more of our community will engage, and looking forward to seeing what comes next with them. And also, in honor of NCCU's ultimate homecoming experience this weekend, I want to make sure that you all know to stay off the road if you can, ride the bus, walk, avoid anywhere near Fayetteville Street or Austin Avenue, and you will be, you will be okay. The game is Saturday. Definitely want to avoid that area if you can. Last but not least, I do want to just make sure I do share that it is Med Week, and since 1983, presidents have proclaimed National Med Week observance to recognize outstanding accomplishments in minority businesses, minority business enterprises, and to honor the corporations and financial institutions supporting minority business development. Durham's Med Week this week celebrates the achievements of minority entrepreneurs and affirms government, business, and community organizations' commitment to principles of equal opportunity. It is our hope that we'll celebrate not only the minority and women-owned businesses and the economic vibrancy that they bring to our city, but also to continue to see their growth and to promote their growth and success, and making sure that you all know and are aware of all the events happening this week at the Durham Convention Center. Other than that, I think that covers all of my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rist.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, colleagues, staff, residents here and online. Good to see you all. A couple of things, I know we have a lot going on tonight, so just keep my comments brief. Thank you, Councilmember Freeman, for mentioning Med Week, and I want to thank the city and the staff, and actually our sponsors for organizing what was a great event. I was there today with Bo and a number of other staff for the opening and the keynote today. Amazing celebration of minority businesses. And I also want to say for the people that are urging this council continually to stand up to the stuff we're getting from the state and federal government, I want you to know why a lot of folks are, while a lot of folks are backing off of supporting minority economic development, this council and the staff is 100% supportive of our minority economic business, development business community, and supports Med Week 100%. So, I'm glad to see the staff doing that. It's a really important statement of who we are here in Durham. I know people are here for a couple of really important hearings, and that's an important way that we do democracy and local government. But I also want to let you know that's by no means all that we do here at the City of Durham. In case you're not aware, and in case you haven't gone through the whole agenda, there's a bunch of items on this agenda that we worked through the work session that are critical pieces of how we do local government here in Durham, and I just want to mention a couple. I think they're not going to get pulled, they may get pulled, but I doubt they'll get pulled, but I want to make sure you're all aware of this. Number one, there's a biophilic cities resolution, and shout out to the folks from the New Hope Bird Alliance for bringing this forward to me. That commits us, along with peers in 30 other cities worldwide, to being an urban area that embraces, that embraces nature and the environment as essential elements of urban living, and commits us to a couple of metrics to track our performance in that. So, this is a really critical statement we're making as a city. There's also on the agenda Page Roads Apartments deal. That's 100% affordable housing, 160 units, 100% affordable, and 60% AMI or below. It's not funded by a proffer. We get, sometimes we get affordable housing through proffers. It's not city-owned land, it's not city subsidy through the bond fund, is essentially an agreement, or like a deal with multifamily mortgage revenue bonds and tax credit investors that are invested in this project. We're doing this with our partners at Durham Housing Authority. It's another way, we have many tools in the toolbox. It's one of many ways that we are ensuring that more affordable housing is getting built in Durham to meet the needs that we have. I want to make sure you're aware of that. There's also a model pilot of lending for backyard ADUs for families that qualify by income. It's one way we can help homeowners to build their wealth as homeowners, but also create more affordable housing units. This is really a model, a model thing that's funded by your housing bond, developed by the staff, I appreciate the staff working through the details. It's a complicated thing, but it's a model thing not many communities are doing, but also working with our contractor, Quorum Homes, to build these ADUs. Model thing, and stay tuned for the results on that. Finally, we're approving additional funds for the Durham Affordable Housing Loan Fund, another way we're creating affordable housing. That's a loan fund that we at the city, the county, and Duke University are contributing to, to allow us to quickly acquire affordable properties that are coming out of their tax credit phase, the 30-year phase, to acquire those quickly, bridge those over to nonprofit developers, and keep them as affordable housing units. So, there's a lot that we're doing here, all important ways that the city is working off and under the radar screen to make this a better community for all of us. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, and good evening, your honor, to my honorable colleagues, to our staff, to all who are in chambers tonight with us in person, and whatever platform you may be watching on. Very quickly, I want to thank my colleagues and associate myself with your comments about Med Week, which in this current climate feels more like an act of defiance than just observance. So, I want to associate myself with those comments. And finally, I want to say Diwali Mubarak to all of our residents and friends and neighbors who are celebrating Diwali today. May the light forever defeat the darkness. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much to my colleagues for all of your remarks. Yes, happy homecoming, NCCU. I look forward to seeing you at some of the events this week and having a good time. For disclosure to everyone who has not noticed, the parade has already happened. It was last Saturday, and I think for the first time since I graduated, I missed the parade. So, there are some changes that were made for the sake of safety and just reconfiguring some things. But, so, next Saturday will be the game, and it'll be just a game. And I'll give this announcement reluctantly, but the yard will be closing after the game. Normally, we go to the bowl and have a great time. So, since the bowl will be closing around 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock, please come downtown and spend your money and your tax dollars throughout the city, and enjoy all of what Durham has to offer. And hopefully, in the future, we'll be able to work together more as a city and the universities, Duke and NCCU, to promote a citywide experience. And I think just many of the remarks I was going to give has already been made. Happy Diwali. Of course, I'll be out there with them tomorrow with the Indian community at BEPS. I know there are thousands that will be convening. I look forward to joining them tomorrow. And of course, Med Week. Yes, you're right, it does feel like an act of defiance, Mayor Protem, because, you know, they're, Washington is watching and trying to shut us down in every way possible. It's just not happening in Durham. We're going to continue to stand on our values. I did want to thank Councilmember Rist. You brought up some really, really valid points. We're always talking about the city's not doing enough, but to, you know, as we're thinking about every possible way that we can address affordable housing, to address housing supply in general, it feels great to be amongst the council where we're putting money, you know, not only do we tax ourselves for affordable housing, we are actually putting money toward We are putting money toward ADUs to make sure that we can put those in, you know, more backyards, to house more people. We are putting more money into affordable, the Affordable Housing Loan Fund. These are just some of the tools in our toolbox that we are addressing. So, and tonight, we're going to address a really big policy that I look forward to discussing, that will address more of the actual conditions. So, we have a lot of work to do. I'm going to keep my comments short and get right to it. And I know there are some signs in the audience. I will respectfully ask that we not hold those signs up because it blocks the view, and normally, I do not, you know, try and enforce, please don't try me. I try not to, you know, overly enforce it because I want to make sure that everyone's voices are heard, but please don't block the view of others. So, I ask to, if you, I'll ask if you just, you have a sign, hold it in front of you rather than up and blocking people. At this time, I will ask our manager to address your priority items.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. The city manager's office only has informational items this evening, that is, for Agenda Item Number Nine and Number 16, presentations were received during the October 9th work session for these items. Those are all my priority items this evening.
Mr. Attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of city council, Senior Deputy City Attorney Fred Lamar sitting in for the City Attorney Kim Rayburg. The city attorney's office has no priority items. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, and city council members. The city clerk's office has no priority items this evening.
Thank you. Could you come back up here for a moment also? Mayor Protem.
Thank you. The priority items having been discharged, we will now read the consent agenda for the record. The consent agenda is comprised of items that the council has already had opportunity to do a deep dive into at a previous work session and can be passed with one vote. However, any member of the public or any member of the council is in a position to pull an item. I'll read that now, beginning with our consent agenda. Item number one. Item number one, Mayor's Hispanic-Latino Committee Appointment. Item number two, Durham Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Appointments. Item number three, Durham Convention and Visitors Bureau Discover Durham Mayoral Appointment. Item four, Durham Convention and Visitors Bureau Discover Durham Joint City-County Representative Appointment. Item five, Participatory Budget Steering Committee Appointment. Item number seven, Approval of the Biophilic Resolution. Item number nine, Durham Rail Trail Project Design Update and Professional Services Contract Amendment with the John R. McAdams Company Incorporated. Suspending for a second. All right. Item number 10, Third Amendment to Project Management Consulting Services Contract with Turner and Townsend Heary LLC. Item number 11, Rooftop PV Pre-Assessment and Design Build Contracts with Renew Energy Solutions LLC. Item number 12, First Amendment to Contract for Citywide Window Washing Services. Item number 13, Resolution Providing Approval of Page Road Apartments and the Financing thereof with Multifamily Housing Revenue Bond. Item number 13, Resolution Providing Approval of Page Road Apartments and the Financing thereof with Multifamily Housing Revenue Bonds. Item 15, Amended and Restated Loan Agreement with Self-Health Ventures Fund, Durham Affordable Housing Loan Fund. Item 16, Contract with Quorum Houses LLC to Administer the Affordable Accessory Dwelling Unit ADU Loan Pilot Program. Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to pull that item. Item number 16 is pulled. Continuing. Item number 17, First Amendment to the Central Square Solutions and Support Agreement. Item 18, Amendment Number One to the Professional Engineering Services Contract with CDM Smith, Inc. for Lead and Copper Rule Program Management. Item number 19, Contract Amendment One to the Service Contract with ADS Environmental Services LLC for Sanitary Sewer Flow and Rainfall Monitoring, Comprehensive Service and Maintenance. Under General Business Agenda, Item Number Eight, Approval of Ordinance Revision to Chapter 10, Article Six, Housing Code, Section 10-241. And under General Business Agenda, Public Hearings, Item Number 22, Cliff Street Partial Street Closing. Item Number 23, Consolidated Zoning Map Change, Ravenstone Commercial. Item Number 24, Consolidated Annexation, Wake Olive. Item Number 25, Consolidated Zoning Map Change, 1607 East Cornwallis Road. That ends the reading of our published agenda. And we can pass it with the exception of Item Number 16, which was pulled by Councilmember Baker. Mr. Mayor, you wish to reassume the gavel?
I'll assume the gavel. Thank you. So all items have been read. And with the exception of Item Number 16, I'll entertain a motion to... I'm sorry. Yeah, Madam Clerk, could you please open the vote? Is everyone voting? There we go. Thank you. Please close the vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right. I will start with Item Number 16.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so this item is $1.75 million. It came through. There was a lot of, I think, discussion during the Thursday work session. I just want to raise some of the key facts about this item, and then I do have a question for staff. I'd like to turn it over to colleagues, see if they have any questions. So the goal here is 20 new accessory dwelling units over the next two to three years. This is $1.75 million. Some of this is for work products. There's also payment for each of the units to Quorum Homes. The goal is at 80% area median income. We don't currently, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't currently have a term for the amount of time that we want that to be affordable, right? If you can correct me, that'd be great. And then, yeah, this is for the next, to develop 20 new accessory dwelling units over the next two to three years. Is that more or less correct on some of the high-level pieces of this contract?
Good evening. Matt Walker, Housing and Neighborhood Services. That's correct. The term of the loan is proposed for 30 years, so the affordability would be for 30 years for the term of the loan.
Okay, the term of the loan is, the term of the loan is 30 years. The affordability period is...
They would run concurrently.
Is for 30 years as well?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. So I only wanted to raise this because we bring in a lot of housing that is affordable at the 80% area median income level through private sector developments. I tend to prefer us to focus public dollars on the deeply affordable housing and need for affordable housing, those units that are affordable to 50%, 40%, 30% area mean income. This, and also housing that is permanently or long-term affordable. And this isn't, this isn't quite there. So I also have a little bit of heartburn over the fact that we only received one response to the request for proposal. That being said, I do believe that there are challenges for homeowners to be able to get loans to build accessory dwelling units in their backyards. Banks don't make it particularly easy and haven't for a long time. I don't know if that's changing, but that's been the case for a while. And two, so basically, I see a space for local government to step in and say, hey, we can, we can help bridge that gap. Two, this isn't a grant. This is a loan. And this is not a forgivable loan. That's something you said you all might want to look into, but that's not something that I necessarily support at this point. So this money does come back over 30 years, 30-year term
That's correct.
to the city, right? So this is a low-interest, 2% rate loan, right? So I did want to raise those issues, just that there is some heartburn, but that I do believe this is objectively a good thing, that the city can step in and kind of fill this hole. I would prefer that it weren't the city. I would prefer that banks were doing this, but they're not. And so I do think that there is a role for the city to play here. And I did want to raise that. And I also just wanted to raise that at this point, I do not support, I want to be on the record, I do not support that this become a forgivable loan at this point. So I wanted to call the record there. And that is, that is it for me. Any of my colleagues have any other comments?
Thank you. Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker, for your comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is, as I mentioned in my opening comments, this is a model pilot program. And let's be clear, I also should clarify, I'm on the board of the Self Help Credit Union, which is a nationwide CD5 that makes affordable loans to people that wouldn't normally get a loan, provides banking products to folks that wouldn't normally get affordable banking products. Even mission-line developers like Self Help cannot make this work, just to be honest with you. No bank is making this kind of ADU lending product. It doesn't exist. And so what the city is doing is stepping in and providing some financing to make it work for the, for the folks trying to do this. The reason why we only had one applicant is like, this is a real innovative thing. We've got a great partner in Quorum Homes, but again, no bank is lending right now to this kind of product, no bank. And so we're doing a, it's exactly why we want to use the bond funds to do this, to do some innovative stuff, to fill a market gap that's not being filled. So I appreciate staff working through the details, and I appreciate our partners at Quorum Housing, and I look forward to these. We're going to learn from this pilot. We talked about this in the work session. But I look forward to working, learning, and working with the city staff to make this work, to actually like do a couple of things, right? We're creating affordable housing, but we're also building wealth for homeowners at the same time. So if we can make this work, which I think we can, this is a model project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just a question. Is there a stipulation in this agreement that the housing has to be affordable?
Yes.
So not just as a build, but also as a rental?
That's the key to the program, that the renters are 80% and below AMI. So ultimately, the outcomes are affordable rental units.
Up to 80%?
Yes.
And is there any, any additional funding made available if they're doing 60, 50, or 30% AMI?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you to my colleagues. I have a couple more questions. I had asked some of these at the work session, and I just want to go back through. The first one is, how are we going to ensure that these units get leased up? I didn't feel like I got a good answer from this, and my concern is that we see ADUs being used for Airbnbs and for short-term rentals. And I just, I'm a bit confused on how we're going to ensure that they are doing the things that we would like and that they're housing people at 80% AMI or lower.
Thank you. So the project goes through permitting and design, construction, and completion. At completion, we have a compliance department, compliance division, that ensures that the units are rented to income-eligible families.
What is the timeframe on that? What is the timeframe on ensuring that they are leased up?
At, at completion, we will, we get information from the owner about who they're renting to. They'll have to show that the family, household that they're renting to is income-eligible. Once that's done, that information will be transmitted to our compliance division, who will approve that their family meets the guidelines to move into the unit.
Yeah, I want to follow up on two things. First, how long do we plan until there is completion? What does that timeline look like?
Generally, it looks like a year.
And so we give these loans out, and for a year, we are not able to do anything. And then after the year, we are dependent on the homeowner to give us who they're leasing it out to, and then we oversee how much their income is?
Let's say, estimate a year for construction. At construction completion, we'll get a certificate of occupancy. The homeowner will do their outreach, and they will tell us who they want to rent to. We will verify the income eligibility of the, of the new household, and we will approve that household to be moved in for that homeowner to be in compliance with their loan agreement.
Is there a timeframe in which people have to lease this, their ADUs up?
Specifically, so that the house doesn't sit vacant, so that the unit doesn't sit vacant. I can't think of a specific timeframe, but remember that the homeowner is paying on the construction costs. So it behooves them to lease up as fast as they can. We haven't made any determination like our multifamily rental, that they have a specific time to lease it up. So I couldn't give you a specific time, but we would expect that it would be leased within 60 days normally after completion.
I mean, it doesn't necessarily behoove them to lease it up as quickly as possible. There are many reasons why you would not want to lease it up. One of them would be a sale of your land with a hugely added benefit on it. And another would be that if you were going to rent it out to like an Airbnb situation, that would be considered a lease, so they wouldn't necessarily have to get that approved. So I do, I just want to make sure that we are actually like following up because it's already a year out, and this is a lot of money that we're lending. And I just want to make sure that we are actually following up. I just feel like the details like feel really fuzzy to me.
Okay, so if I understand you correctly, the homeowner will have a loan agreement with the city that specifies how this loan keeps them in compliance with the objective of the program. So they would not leave the unit vacant, because if they did leave the unit vacant, they wouldn't be in compliance with the loan agreement. In terms of the number of days, you know, I would say 60 days would be normal for a unit to be leased up because the homeowner would be incurring, you know, cost for a unit to be vacant. If they did somehow rent it through an Airbnb, they would automatically not be in compliance with their loan agreement.
And what is the penalty for noncompliance?
They would be in default on that loan agreement. And generally, the loan would need to be repaid.
Immediately?
Yes.
Okay, so they...
I mean, they'd have a cure period, but they would be in default.
Okay, but I just, I'm like, okay, so they are not in compliance if they don't lease up in a certain amount of time, but we're not giving them an amount of time? So it's, there's like a period where they might or might not be in compliance? 60 days, but maybe not? Is that something we can get in details on?
So I would, I would say 60 days, and I would make sure that that would be clear in the loan agreement so that the units wouldn't sit vacant, in your example, for extended period of time?
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yes. Okay, is that something that we're adding to this?
I think, I think it's something that we make clear at this point.
Okay. All right. The next thing that I want to ask you about is that you said in the work session that these would average about $80,000 to build. And my concern is that I have not seen that that is actually the average for the ADUs that Quorum is building. And so I was hoping you could address the disparity there.
So the $80,000 was the average of the subsidy per unit. Quorum has indicated that they have an $80,000 model that they could build thereby, being able to build the unit without debt for any specific homer. It would be their smallest unit.
Sorry, so for, if they don't get the $80,000 model, then the homeowner subsidizes the remainder?
That's correct.
Okay.
So we do want to make sure that the homer, homeowner does put some equity into the deal, and that folks that don't have the equity that's needed, we'd be able to help them a little more. And folks that can put more into the deal wouldn't need as much subsidy. And that averaged out to about $80,000.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for like the detailed questions. I know we went over it one time already. I'm just, it's a big amount. It's a, it's an awesome pilot, and I think that we all really want it to be successful. And so I'm just like trying to make sure that it feels ready to go. And I also am like, like my colleague feeling a little bit leery that we only got one response to our RFP. I mean, I'm familiar with Quorum, and I know that they do good work in the community, so it's not a concern necessarily about that. It's just, it's a large investment, and I want it to be successful. I want us to be able to scale it up, and so...
So do I. And, you know, one of the things, if you allow me, it's a pilot program. So if it sounds like I don't have all the answers, it's because I don't have all the answers because it's a pilot program. And we want to make sure we hit the things that are important. We want to make sure that the lessons that we learn help us to make a program better if we're going to continue it. And we're going to give it our best shot.
And so how closely like will y'all be working with Quorum to develop the actual procedural steps? I know that they get to, they are doing some design, because some part of this amount is to Quorum for design of the project, and then some of it is, is the loan. How closely will y'all be working in terms of that design?
Very closely, very closely. The program manual, I think, is, is the key at this point to make sure that Quorum and the city are on the same page so that we can turn and have a public-facing document that shows how the program is going to run and what makes it folks eligible. I did get a lot of input from folks calling about it, so I know that there's a lot of interest in it. But because it's a pilot program, we have to kind of get on the same page between the city and Quorum. So we'll be working very closely with them.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you for answering all of my questions. And I just want to say too that I think that this is one good tool that we have in our toolbox. And, and I just want to make sure that it is, it's done well. And also, I want to recognize that there are a lot of barriers to homeownership. And so I know we're talking about low-income homeowners, but there are a lot of barriers to homeownership. And I want to make sure that we're doing an equally diligent job of ensuring that our homeowners assistance program is actually back and working and accessible to folks who really need it and looking at ways for folks to actually be able to get into homeownership and, and have access to that type of wealth that folks already do have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just one quick question. Am I, am I hearing, I think I heard an additional detail, and I'm trying to make sure I heard it correctly. Is Quorum serving as a, like, a contractor for the city? Or is Quorum operating as the contractor to build, or both?
The better answer is, is both. They're being hired as the administrator for the program to help families move through the process to build an ADU because it's, you know, they can't just buy a unit. They have to go through design, permitting, talk to their banks, see how much equity they have, see how much they can bring to the deal, and, and get it built and deal with contractors.
So essentially, this $1.75 million is to kind of run through Quorum? It doesn't run through multiple different contractors? It runs through only Quorum?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I'm excited to support this item. There was lots of questions at the work session. I feel very comfortable. I understand it's a pilot. We don't have everything answered. That's the point. I would also like to remind everyone, it's 1.75 of the $95 million, and actually 160 million between the $95 million bond referendum that we put in front of the voters in 2019 and the additional funds through the federal government. So the housing program, which is Forever Home Durham, is 160 million and actually more because we also put American Rescue Plan dollars behind some of the affordable housing projects because of construction overruns during the pandemic when, well, and that really hasn't come down. So I just want to remind folks that it's a very small percentage to run a pretty interesting pilot. I also would like to remind folks that Quorum Homes, the reason that he began this is because he built an ADU in his own backyard, and he realized what a challenge it was and how hard it was. And so that is the, he's a, I think, a former Durham Public Schools teacher. And that's how he got into housing. He was just trying to be a good neighbor and provide housing and realized a huge gap that's out there for folks who want to be innovative and creative about how they're providing housing for their neighbors. And so I just really want to highlight his track record and his commitment to Durham. And finally, this was something we were supposed to kind of get off the ground in 2020. So it's been five, five years. So I'm excited to say yes to this. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate Councilmember Coviero sharing the background and insights. I want to also add that Quorum was also, or the owner of Quorum, I don't know if you're in the room, but I know that they were an active member in the SCAD conversation, and they were very actively pushing for us to move very quickly. and they were very actively pushing for us to move very quickly. And so it's just alarming, and I just want to make sure that I put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues, for your commentary. I, you, you answered a lot of good questions. I think you're good now. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Only in Durham, only in Durham where you, you have a, a teacher who tries to spend their time occupying with a hobby and build something in their backyard, and it turns into an enterprise where you're able to build housing in your city for other people. And I'm, I'm really appreciative of the work that's been done here, because nobody else would bite, and no bank would fund. So the city is controlling the whole supply chain, and we're doing it with a dermite, a local dermite. And one thing we can say out of this is, at the end of this program, there will be more people housed than there are now. And components of the SCAD movement was very beneficial. And I'm excited to see this as one of those components, being able to house people. At this time, I will entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Quorum Houses LLC for administration of the ADU loan pallet in an amount not to exceed 1.75 million, and to make non, I'm sorry, $1,750,000, and to make non-susceptive changes and edits consistent with the city's contracting requirements prior to execution.
Moved as read. Second?
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Thank you. Please close the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right. Is it number eight right? Where is it? Oh, there it is. All right. Item, our next item is item number eight. We do have a lot of speakers here. All right. With that being said, we will start with our online speakers. I will allot two minutes for speakers this evening. First, we have item number eight. All right, this is item number eight, which is approval of an ordinance revision to Chapter 10, Article 4, Housing Code, Section 10-241. There has been a lot of commentary around this, and we, and colleagues, let me just say, I appreciate, I appreciate each and every last one of you for the work that we've done around this, this ordinance. We, we've had a lot of one-offs, one-on-one meetings and conversations, all trying to get to the finish line on this. Want to thank the community for the emails that have come through, for the engagement, and those who are showing up in the room tonight as well. I have not heard a single council member request something different and a different outcome. It's been more so just managing the multiple versions that have come from the attorney's office, from community members, from council members making adjustments. So I, I do believe there will be some changes to this tonight, just based on my individual conversations with you all. And we will try and get to an end. But first, considering there is no staff report, I can go ahead and start with, start with our speakers online, and then I'll go to in person. I will call names, five names at a time for in person, and then I'll bring it before the council for our deliberations, and then we'll move forward. All right. Yeah. All right. Do we have, oh, Sam. Do we have Samuel Scarborough online?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Scarborough is not in the queue.
All right. Leslie St. Dre.
Mr. Mayor, Leslie St. Dre is also not in the queue.
Okay, Ms. Adams, Stella Adams.
Yes, she is.
No Ms. Adams is going to show up. Ms. Adams, can you hear me? Ms. Stella? Can you see her?
Hello, Council, can you hear me?
Could you get a little closer to the mic?
Um, can you hear me now?
Oh, yep, there you go. Welcome. You have two minutes, Ms. Stella.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, Mayor Proton, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Stella Adams. I'm a citizen of Durham. I am so proud to support this amendment to our code as it was put forward by thoughtful youth of our community who did the research, did the job, and put forward a proposition that really, I'm surprised we hadn't already implemented in Durham since it has been successfully utilized in Charlotte and several other communities since 2007. This will mean so much to a number of our families in Durham who are living in substandard housing and being charged full rate for, for substandard pay. I have seen and experienced as a housing advocate, I have witnessed conditions where there were holes in the floor in the, what were the former Brasswell Apartments. There, there wasn't even a floor, yet people were paying market rate. Well, they were paying, you know, out of their pocket without subsidy to live in those conditions. And when they were forced evicted, they, you know, had no, no way of recovering, of defending the eviction and recovering their, getting abatement because of the poor condition. So I really want to just support this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we will, just one more time, do you see Samuel Scarborough or Leslie St. Dre?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, sounds good. We will now move to in-person speakers, and I will call five at a time. Italo Medelis, Cynthia Hoskins, Regina Mays, Brenda Solomon, and C.R. Clark. You can just queue right here in line behind the, and if I called your name, just go ahead and come on up. Again, Italo, Cynthia Hoskins, Regina Mays, Brenda Solomon, and C.R. Clark.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Mayor Mayor Proton, City Council, Italo Medelis, General Counsel for the North Carolina Tenants Union. So first of all, I would like to, before doing anything, thank the Riverside High School Affordable Housing Club. I don't know if they're here, but yes, round of applause. Without them spearheading this, we would not be here today. So that's a beautiful thing. Secondly, I would also like to say that we don't need to go deeply into the law today. We've been doing this for two work sessions. But I also want to say, this is not a symbolic resolution. This is a very, very real thing. Enforcement, we talk about non-enforcement. Sure, the city's not going to enforce it, but the people are, through a private right of action. It's very enforceable. You've heard from other attorneys in Charlotte here, and we can enforce it through the people, even though it doesn't come through the municipality. Secondly, deterrence is an operative part of the law. It's not something to minimize, right? If you go down to my alma mater, North Carolina Central University School of Law, take a criminal law class over there in statutory development, you will see, right? Deterrence is a very, very, very operative part of the law. And when it comes to amendments, we would prefer, as a North Carolina Tenants Union, for this ordinance to be adopted as is, as introduced by Councilmember Chelsea Cook. Now, we also understand that there are some issues with the Danzy decision. Even though it doesn't have any precedential value, it does have some issues when, you know, people try and attack the ordinance. And these are very, very minor amendments that we put in our original memo in response to the original city attorney's memo in Section 4C, which gives three different ways to amend the resolution, to add a notice requirement, to add a knowledge requirement, and to add an opportunity to cure. Those would be, not change the resolution to the ordinance substantially, and we believe that will protect us from legal issue. So thank you very much. Hope it can get adopted.
All right, y'all almost made me clap as well, but I'm just, it's going to take a long time. So if you will, just please hold your applause to the end. That'll be very helpful to get through tonight.
My name is Cynthia Hoskins. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilman. I'm a resident at Willett Street, and we've had so many complaints, so many maintenance problems, so many retaliations. I had put notices up to come for the city council. They took my notices down. DHIC took them down, said I was not to put them up. I've been trying to have meetings for our community in the building, but the people are so scared to come out. They're scared of retaliation, and they will retaliate against them. I've seen it already. It's already started. And a lot of people that, that's with me, one lady has been in the emergency room for over five years. These are all her, most of some of her papers. I have three envelopes of everything that they have done to me since I've been there. And I moved in July the 1st, 2021, and I'm still having problems there. It's, 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 it's a nasty building. I don't understand why. Our maintenance does not clean. He does not do recycle. He does not do light bulbs. He does not do carpet, and he does not clean elevators. So we have to live in that area ourselves. If we don't, if they don't clean it, we got to clean it. We shouldn't have to clean our own building that we live in. Everybody that's with me is from Willett Street, and everyone has a lot of, a lot of, a lot of problems that we are trying to get fixed. I just want everything to be safe, clean, and people live in a better condition than they were living in now. If y'all come and look at that building, you'll see.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and have a good day.
You too. Next, Ms. Mays.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I want to speak on these landlords. I don't understand why they still getting paid, and we're living in crappy places. I have black stuff coming up through my carpet. Housing Authority not doing nothing about it. The city came out, they're not doing nothing about it. I have a refrigerator I haven't been able to use in a year. So now I'm getting ready to get evicted, because I didn't pay him. I took his money, my rent, and had to buy me a freezer. I had to buy me a little refrigerator for my insular. So I don't understand why I'm getting evicted. And they're failing him. You know, the Housing Authority not paying them. And like I said, I don't understand it. It's some rules, and then he walked in on me last week while I was taking a shower. He felt like he had the, the vodka. He said, that's his property. So, you know, I'd be like, can you at least wait till I get dressed before you bring somebody in here to do some work? You know, I, I, I just don't understand what's going on, why we are not being more protected as tenants. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask again if we could just hold our applause so we can get the speakers through. Ms. Mays, what was, was that, are you Ms. Solomon?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Mays.
Regina Mays, Durham resident, Mayor, Mayor Proton, all City Council. Good evening. I wanted to come behind Ms. Solomon, because I've been working with her approximately for the last month. I got a call from another resident, as we do in this community. We pull together, we call each other when we have nobody else to call. And to find out that Ms. Solomon has actually had a fire in her housing due to faulty wiring, but she still had to pay rent. It disturbs me. And she's one in a million. You know, I thought about this afternoon, and as, as I was thinking about what I would speak upon and how I wanted to address this matter, I thought about a resident that I heard about maybe around 2019, 2020, that actually passed away after reporting multiple mode and other concerns in her apartment with doctor's documentation as a maintenance personnel told her, just sit on your porch for a while. I bleached the walls and everything down. And this resident died. I thought about how rules and laws don't become bills and get passed until that happens. It's sickening, and it needs to stop. Again, as I spoke recently on a Thursday meeting, where's the prevention? This is your chance to vote and create that prevention. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have, next up, I have C.R. Clark. And I'm going to go ahead and call the rest of the names. Milo Graber, Susanna Carvalho, Peter Gilbert, Durant Long. Welcome. Say your name, and you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Milo Graber. I'm a senior at Riverside High School, as well as the founder and leader of our Affordable Housing Club. I'm going to speak in favor of this ordinance. Affordable housing, as we all know, is a major issue in Durham and affects a lot of people, including a lot of DPS students. A lot of students live in unsafe housing, unhealthy conditions, and are living in fear of getting evicted due to being charged such high levels of rent. They can be forced to be evicted, and that's very disruptive, especially when they are forced to move school districts because they have to find housing in a different area. Passing this ordinance would do a lot to help a lot of residents, including students, by encouraging landlords to maintain housing. So that would make housing a lot healthier and less dangerous to residents. It would give tenants more power in negotiations with landlords when getting evicted or trying to negotiate having to pay less rent because they can't afford it that month. It would give them more tools to defend themselves in court when they're being evicted. And we should pass it, even if we're worried about sometime in the future the state potentially trying to preempt it or slum lords trying to sue the city for having this ordinance, because we shouldn't be afraid to do a good thing just because we think some point in the future, we may lose that power. We should just do the good thing, because we think it's good policy, and we believe that it is the right thing to do. Further, this ordinance already exists in three other cities. In North Carolina, Charlotte, and Pineville are two of them. That indicates that the city of Durham can pass this and should pass this. I think that also indicates that we should pass it in the form proposed by Councilor Cook, because that is the form that was, is used in those other cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Milo? Milo? Look around. This is your fault. Milo, look around. This is your fault. Good job. Good job, buddy. And I took that personal privilege because so often, our young people just don't get engaged. We'll do the work and figure it out, but I want you to be encouraged. You brought the community together to do something powerful, and we'll get there. We'll figure it out. But this is your fault, and you and your friends. Good job. Good job. All right, back to no more plazas. She's gotta clap for Milo. I had a C.R. Clark. Was there a C.R. Clark? Are you C.R. Clark? Oh, okay, all right. Well, come on up. And are you Susanna? All right. Come on, Susanna. Welcome. You have two minutes.
Honorable Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name is Susanna. I am a medical doctor with 14 years of practice in pediatric emergency room and unemployed in the room. Recently, I became a U.S. citizen from Durham, and I am thankful for finishing my immigration process, but I still share feelings of grief, hurt, and hope for justice. My feeling of belonging is certainly stronger with the right to vote, but I still need to have my other civil and constitutional rights granted. Tonight, I bid before my neighbors and my leaders to express my support to tenants' rights and share my own first rental experience in Durham in the United States and in the United States. Before moving to Durham four years ago, I was promised a recently renovated second-floor unit at the Forest and received a first-floor abandoned unit when I got here after driving 827 miles from Miami, from where I came full of hope for a new and safer life. In May 2021, 2301 White Pine Drive was an inhospitable address, and the manager was aware of it before I signed the contract. There was mold in the cabinets. The paint and the carpet were old, moldy, and dirty. The AC didn't work. There were many spider webs and dead bugs on the floor. The manager agreed to cancel the contract with no penalty, but has never given back the money to me. And it wasn't just a matter of money, but also the impact such immorality could cause to my health and caused among my new neighbors. The latest response from Dasman Residential is that the property was sold, and they haven't resolved the problem. I also tried legal representation and legal aid, but I haven't heard back from them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So just make sure, Susanna. That was Susanna, okay. Peter, you, Peter?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Peter Gilbert. I'm the litigation director of the North Carolina Justice Center. I was formerly the director of the Durham Eviction Diversion Program, which I helped found with this council and city's support in 2017. I went on to then direct the statewide eviction diversion program for legal aid of North Carolina. So I'm very familiar with how successful this ordinance has been, where in Charlotte, we've used it for more than 15 years, and it's been one of the most effective tools that we've had, where it has never been challenged, and it's been one of the most effective tools that we've had to force landlords to live up to their duty to provide fit inhabitable homes. I've been in so many terrible homes that you become dull to it. I've seen so many homes without heat, with leaking roofs, with roaches, with holes in the floor, everything you've heard about tonight. I remember, though, going to one with a law student intern. She was a lawyer from Palestine. She was getting her LLM at Duke. And it was her first time in one of these homes in Durham. We were doing the investigation, and she was shocked. She was shocked that people in the wealthiest country in the world were living in conditions like this. She was astonished. And not only that they were living there, but they were paying exorbitant rents to do so. The problem is that with the lack of affordable housing in Durham, landlords have very little financial incentive to fix anything. Tenants are afraid to call the city. They're afraid to make complaints. Even when we represent them, we have to encourage them to file a complaint with the city to do it. This ordinance is the most powerful tool that we have to help ensure that tenants can live somewhere that is safe. It has two other benefits that I want to bring up briefly that I expect will happen as a result of this ordinance. One, as you may know, single-family homes are the ones that tend to be the most dilapidated, and they're also the targets of the investment companies like Cerberus that buy up... they actually called their company Cerberus, that buy up single-family homes like this and take them off the market for homeowners in Durham. Hopefully, this ordinance will make it a little bit less attractive for them to buy up these dilapidated homes, do minimal surface-level repairs, and then charge exorbitant rents. Thank you.
Hello. It's me again, Barbara Lyons, Juan Wallace.
Ms. Lyons, always good to see you.
I pray I don't go over my time. I'm gonna... I ain't gonna read it. But I emailed your office last year, right before the DHA board meeting, before they installed a new person for budgeting and all that. And they just loved him because he knew about financing and housing and all of this stuff. But I'm here today to speak, I know Peter Gilbert, because he helped with Dante Strabino and myself. We did a whole lot of Stop Evictions Durham behind DHA and their fraudulent stealing of money. Thank you, sir, for giving them the 1.2 million to solve that problem. But guess what? They're picking and choosing who they're going to help. You have to qualify. But I know I was in that, and I came down here to see you about it because the manager at Development, again, called me and told me she was gonna throw me out. For what? When the bill was paid, correct? Yeah, and we do live in substandard housing because we're one step from homeless. Yeah, so... oh, my two minutes isn't up. But anyway, I was going to read the email I sent you, and I got in contact with the person, and they hit me back. And I went to that meeting. I saw the director. Her name is Ashanti, I think. I got her number and everything. And then the young lady was at the meeting who tried to lie to tell me that it was just a graduation, and it wasn't. Y'all found out. The director came in and said, "You can speak." She actually allowed me to speak. No one from the mayor's office came to that meeting, but I did. And it was recorded. I post everything on my Facebook page. Ms. B Speaks, Barbara Lyons on Facebook. Find me. Inform yourself. Get whatever you need from there. I've been threatened. I've been called all kinds of names. My life is being threatened. That's posted as well, too. I'm being called a racist. For what? I speak the truth, okay? But anyway, I'm here to talk about this today. Once you solve a problem and you come to your mayor or your constituents to solve a problem, it's supposed to be solved. You did that for us. But DHA is telling me and several other residents, "You don't qualify." It's because they don't like you, or you don't count, or you're not family, or whatever. This is fraudulent. I am about to start legal proceedings. I'm sick of this. My son is in the military right now, not getting paid. I'm gonna finish this. He's the city... he's celebrating this. He's fighting for this country right now. He's not getting paid, but he had to pay $5,000 to fix my broken teeth because of DHA. Can you please fix this for me? I don't owe them anything. They owe me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a good night.
All right, I have Durant Long, Chris Pearlstein, Amanda Wallace, Donna Batista. Durant, you're next.
Good evening, y'all. My name is Durant Long. I'm just a concerned citizen, and I want to speak before the council and say that, you know, there's been talk of defiance tonight and in society and a time where it feels like the judicial system serves one and one and one specific group of upper-class people more. It's refreshing to see some semblance of equity being put forward and maybe giving average citizens a chance to have some sort of justice, some sort of fairness. So I just want to say that this is a great first step, and thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. State your name for me.
Brianda Barrera, not C.R. Clark.
Okay, gotcha. You can adjust that mic. There you go.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Brianda Barrera. I am a Durham renter. I'm a member of the Triangle Tenant Union, and I'm a public health professional. I'm here to urge you to vote in favor of the proposed ordinance tonight. This ordinance would be a critical step toward justice, health, and dignity for the people of our beloved city. This ordinance is a shield for the most vulnerable members of our community. It's for our elderly neighbors living with black mold who are afraid to complain for fear of retaliation from landlords who only view them as an obstacle to profits. It's for undocumented neighbors enduring severe pest infestations because their landlord counts on their silence. This ordinance gives us a tool to fight back and to live with the basic dignity that everyone deserves. In my public health career, I've learned two very fundamental things. I've learned, first, that housing is health care, and, second, that housing and health care are human rights. The quality of our housing is one of the single most important social determinants of health. A person cannot manage their diabetes in a home with no running water. A child cannot overcome asthma in an apartment plagued with black mold. And no one can heal when they're shivering in the cold due to having no heat in the winter. This ordinance directly addresses these health crises. By defining what makes a home eminently dangerous to health and safety, it draws a clear line. It states that when landlords fail to provide these basic protections, they cannot profit from the suffering that they are imposing on their tenants. It empowers tenants to protect their hard-earned money and to hold negligent landlords accountable. Failing to adopt this ordinance perpetuates a cycle of chronic stress, mental health crises, and preventable diseases. This ordinance is a proactive and preventative measure to ensure that landlords maintain adequate living conditions. So my ask for you is clear: support this ordinance. Send a message to Durham renters that you agree. No one should be forced to pay for a home that makes them chronically sick or puts them in imminent danger. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amanda Wallace, and I'm taking a breath right now because it's so frustrating when you have to come in here and talk to people who think they have more power than the people to make these decisions. And so, this should be a no-brainer, right? It should be a no-brainer. Slum lords, they come to this city or they're in this city, and they are not taking care of properties, and then people should not have to pay to live in those places, right? It should be a no-brainer. Two other cities in North Carolina have passed this ordinance, and you've heard that it has worked for people. Again, it should be a no-brainer. But you say that you don't want to pass this because it's symbolic or it's performative. This whole thing is performative. This whole thing, tonight, is performative. When you chose to put on your bowtie, you performing tonight, right? This is a performance. And so, my question is, when will the people stop believing in them? We are currently in the middle of an election, and it is like destined that this is coming up right now because this is about values. This is about values. Do we value people, or do we value profit? I know what you value. And if we keep looking at housing, right, as a commodity and not as a right in our city, this is gonna continue to be an issue. How many people gotta come sit up here and tell you how bad they are living for you to do something? For you... and you, on the campaign trails, Mark Anthony Middleton, you keep talking about Wall Town and these places that... No, what's the apartment complex that they just said? Willard Street. You keep talking about Willard Street like it's the best thing. What you gonna say now? Stop lying. Stop lying. You too, Leo Williams. You're lying. And I hope that this is one of the last meetings for y'all.
Welcome.
City Councilmembers, I'm Chris Pearlstein. I actually do like the bowtie, but, you know, I just have no sense of style, so you might want to take that with a grain of salt. I'm supportive of an ordinance of this type. Tenant safety issues are real. Naturally occurring affordable housing is the most likely to have habitability issues like this with what this ordinance covers. This is a problem with an aging housing stock and a housing shortage that disproportionately impacts the least privileged of our community. This is why we especially need new affordable housing, whether built by the market or supported by efforts like the previously passed Affordable Housing Bond, expanding housing choices, or the thing that you just passed today. Maybe that's gonna work, the Quorum Housing ADUs. That would be great. A stronger tenant protection ordinance is an important complementary piece of this puzzle to ensure existing tenants and existing housing are more protected. These folks deserve options outside of staying in legally uninhabitable housing caused by negligent landlords. With issues this important, considering limitations of your legal powers in the state, we have to work together to find a solution that's going to actually protect these folks, whether it's by city-supervised repairs ensuring habitability or protections tenants can use in court. If that's this proposal, then all of you should support it. This shouldn't be a divisive election time issue. This should be about how best to address an issue that impacts our most vulnerable neighbors. They need it.
Thank you. Donna Batista, but you have Emily... Peter Whitehead, Nico Jordan. I just have Vincent. And Nicole... welcome.
Good evening, elected rulers of Durham and fellow Durhamites. My name is Donna Batista, and I live at JFK Towers. I sure wish I had brought the pictures I emailed you guys to the work sessions because you'd have been impressed or depressed or both. Anyway, I've spoken at last two sessions. I'm not gonna talk about JFK other than to mention that number-one issue is there's no electronic connection between a seven-story apartment building with 175 units. There's no connection with us and the fire department just down the road. It's been that way since I moved there three and a half years ago. I'm the one that had mushrooms growing behind my sink. A number of us have had raw sewage come up. Various apartments, various floors, very regular. It's coming up through the kitchen sink, the bathroom sink, and the bathtubs. It's pretty disgusting. Tonight, I'm not speaking for myself or for JFK. I'm speaking on the behalf of Durham CAN. It's an organization I am proud to say I've been involved in through my church for many years. As part of this work with CAN, in the spring, I facilitated listening sessions with Durham Housing Authority residents. Maintenance problems came up over and over and over again. One person I spoke with said his refrigerator didn't work, and he has to go every day to the store to buy ice just so he can have food that he can eat. Can you hear me? Somebody cut me off. Can you hear me now? All right, that's a more second. All right, when it comes to deeply affordable housing, there's no such thing as having extra money to fix something. You know, some of us already got our food stamps cut. My food stamps were cut $50 starting in October. I found out about it the end of September. There's no such thing as extra income. Yesterday, okay, let me just say one final thing. We're listening to you, and we really hope you're listening to us. We've got to have some changes here, and it's very doable. Thank you all.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and Councilmembers. My name is Emily Wilks, and I'm the Associate Pastor for Public Witness at Trinity Avenue Presbyterian Church. And I'm speaking today as a member of the Affordable Housing Research Action Team with Durham CAN. In the spring, Durham CAN conducted a listening campaign of over 2,000 residents of Durham. And affordable housing was the number-one issue that our members raised. Ensuring that the affordable housing that already exists is safe and dignifying is equally as important as building more deeply affordable units for low-income and working families. In our listening sessions with Durham Housing Authority tenants, we heard stories that any faith community with a rent assistance ministry knows all too well: homes infested with roaches and bedbugs, rotted floors and ceilings, exposed wire, unsafe structures, and fear. Fear of speaking up, fear of retaliation, fear of losing the only home that they have. In my tradition, Jesus tells us, "Whatever you do to the least of these, you do to Me." And that means that the housing conditions our most vulnerable neighbors endure are the conditions we are subjecting Christ Himself to. So, to be clear, when our most vulnerable neighbors are living in these conditions, it is not just neglect, it is sacrilege. It's a moral failure. And the way that we house the poor is the way that we house Christ Himself. And right now, Christ is living with roaches and bedbugs. Christ is dying waiting for repairs, and Christ is being crucified and still expected to pay rent. This ordinance matters to communities of faith. Please pay attention and bear witness to the stories before you tonight so that Durham can be a city where, or where even, or perhaps especially, where the least of these can be protected. Thank you.
Mayor, City Councilmembers, my name is Peter Whitehead. I'm a resident of Durham. I'm here to speak in support of the- I'm here to speak in support of Chelsea Cook's proposal here. I just, it makes, it just seems common sense. If they do it in Charlotte, you know, some of you own restaurants, I'd never pay for a meal that had bugs in it. You'd never pay for someone, you know, you'd never pay the dry cleaner for one of your suits if they didn't clean it. So, it seems that if someone has housing that has bugs in it, is not livable, there's no reason to pay for that service, and they should be allowed to withhold rent.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nico Jordan. I'm a senior in the Affordable Housing Club at Riverside High School. I'm here to speak in favor of the ordinance. I'm here to, sorry, I'm here to speak in favor of Item 8, the Tenant Protection Ordinance. This ordinance should be passed in its current form. It's a simple way that we can help keep Durham families in their homes and would help ensure families and students have livable housing. Thank you for your time. Have a good day.
So it's your fault, too. Good work.
My name's Nicole Drapluk. I'm a resident in East Durham. I'm a behavioral health technician and member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I'm asking this council to stand with the people of Durham, not slum lords and predatory developers, by voting yes on tonight's ordinance as it is, as it stands, without any edits. At my apartment complex, my neighbors and I have endured weeks without air conditioning and peak summer heat, flood damage, bug infestations, and broken security pads. When my AC failed this summer, it was over 80 degrees inside my home for weeks. Even after repeated calls and emails, property management dragged their feet. A technician said the system needed replacing, but management closed the ticket with no solution or repair, and still, it really hasn't been fixed. It kind of just like went on on its own. I think about my immigrant and Spanish-speaking neighbors who face the same neglect or worse, but may stay silent out of fear or retaliation. Why should tenants pay rent when landlords fail to provide livable and safe conditions? There's countless horror stories within Durham housing. Through community outreach, I've met countless Durham residents with mold, pests, broken doors, collapsing roofs, and are facing eviction. In a state where rent control is illegal, tenants often feel powerless. This ordinance gives people a real pathway to demand safe and dignified housing. The people who keep this running, the people who keep this city running deserve so much better. This ordinance is the bare minimum, but it's a crucial step towards housing justice. Be bold, vote yes on this ordinance, but please do not stop there. Durham is in a housing crisis. Reject predatory developers, hold the DHA accountable, and fund truly affordable housing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, and I'd like to applaud all of you out there for being here tonight, supporting and speaking up, because silence is consent when you don't say anything. And this ordinance is very important. My name is Vincent Lawrence, and I'm a resident at the modular property of Willard Street Apartments, one of Durham's worst-kept secrets. I have been there since they cut the ribbon from day one. There have been over close to two dozen in management in succession in and out of the door. They have been using skeleton staffing to run the building. They are trying to run Willard Street Apartments and Ashton Place Apartments with one apartment community manager taking care of two buildings and one assistant and a maintenance person who is not a master technician, who can only do basic work. I have been without heat now for one week, not due to their negligence, because they found out when the worker came in, they did come in to follow up promptly, and I, when you do stuff right, I applaud you. You know, so some things are done right, but a lot of things are done wrong. And it seems like city and state can have shadow governments within themselves, because DHI, Durham Housing Improvement, they are, you can call them to go surpass your management, not disrespecting management, but you're not getting the results needed. They don't return your calls. I have, I have attempted to speak with the Vice President and the RPM, and they have not even called. I've left messages, and they have not, they didn't even call me back today, and I am a senior and a disabled.
Thank you so much.
And I, this is not right. It's not, it's unfair. And you all need to support this because this will give a voice.
Thank you.
To us.
Victor Iquiza, Mickey, Alex Trejo, Barbara Lyons, Paola Davila. I already got you. Sorry, I, no, I know you will, but don't, don't. Ms. Lyons, you have not changed since I've met you back in 2006.
Good evening, Victor Iquiza. I'm a current tenant at Juniper Square Apartments in East Durham, near the Village. So you already know the conditions there. This is a small and poorly managed apartment complex. If I had to guess, I would say that 80 to 90% of the residents there are immigrant families, majority Spanish-speaking. Many of these neighbors have multiple families living in one apartment to simply afford rent and skyrocketing cost of living. Landlords take advantage of these communities because of the lack of language access and the fact that many of these tenants are new to this country. These apartments offer no amenities, no clubhouse, no gym, no pool, no leasing office on site, and not even a playground for the kids to play on. Yet, we are expected to pay our rent on time every single month or risk eviction, even when there are consistent power outages, the AC is not working during the summer, and maintenance has not come to fix leaks or bug infestations. Tenants are treated as objects for profit and not as human beings. Tenants are criminalized and surveilled, not protected and defended. Not only are immigrant neighbors facing rising rents, inadequate housing conditions, and exploitive landlords, but the threat of ICE terror is ever more present in our communities. But this crisis is not just in Juniper Square, or Duke Manor, or McDougal. It's a crisis facing thousands of people in Durham, in our state, in our country. All tenants, all tenants, regardless of their citizens or not, deserve safe and truly affordable housing. We support this ordinance because it gives power back to the tenants in a system that consistently puts profit over people. We demand that City Council pass this ordinance tonight and not postpone any longer. Housing is a human right. Thank you so much.
Good evening to my community. My name's Mickey. I am a proud organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation here in Durham. I'm here, of course, to support this ordinance tonight and demand its swift passage without edits. But for real, this is really just the bare minimum. Nobody should be collecting rent for, you know, uninhabitable conditions. And I cannot wait to see these landlords sweat. I don't know about y'all. But again, like, this is the bare minimum. This is the first step. Next, we got to abolish landlords altogether. We shouldn't be living in a system where, you know, these people up on a council or on a board can make these decisions for us. We should be making these decisions for ourselves. So I really want to urge everybody, you know, shout out to the students, to the organizers, to everybody that came out to support this tonight. Make sure that the people's voices were heard. I want to urge y'all to continue this organizing, continue this good work, keep it up because Durham needs it. And, you know, we can build the future that we deserve, where we actually make these decisions for ourselves, and the working class holds the power.
Hello, my name's Alex Trejo. I'm a child of East Durham. And I want to say that this tenant protection ordinance is just the first step, just like Mickey was saying, but it's a necessary one. As it stands right now, without any amendments, it would finally give tenants the right to say, if you won't fix my home, you don't get my rent. That's the kind of protection and power working-class people in Durham have needed for years. It's not radical, it's common sense. But while this ordinance addresses the conditions we live in, it doesn't yet touch the system that creates those conditions. Because the truth is, the housing crisis in Durham isn't an accident, it's a product of greed. It's Duke University, the largest landlord in our city, hoarding land and wealth while paying almost nothing in taxes. It's the Durham Housing Authority, failing to meet its units, overcharging residents, and pushing families into debt. It's developers who buy up whole neighborhoods, jack up rents, and call it revitalization. We're told to be grateful for every new development, every promise of quote-unquote "affordable housing," but we know those promises don't include us. They include profit margins. So yes, this ordinance matters, it's a start, but we're not here for small fixes to a broken machine. We're here because we need a system that actually works, one built by and for the people who live here, not one that serves landlords, developers, and universities. We need a Durham where no one has to beg for dignity, where housing is a right, and where power truly rests with the people, not with the representatives who only represent profit. Because this city belongs to us, and together, we're going to make sure it stays that way.
Welcome. What's your name?
Paola.
Okay, thank you. All right, after, okay, I have Anthony Snell, Jordan Forrest Strulie, Jackie Wax Saff, Angenee Bell. And Cynthia Williams. You may continue.
My name is Paola Davila. I am a Durham resident, and I do urge you to support the Tenant Protection Ordinance. It is unethical and irresponsible to allow landlords to collect rent on properties with dangerous conditions. These conditions impact the health and well-being of tenants, bringing further challenges to our day, which I feel like we already are facing enough. So in making this decision tonight, which I hope it is tonight, I encourage you to pause and reflect on who you are really serving, and the communities you are choosing to abandon, and the city you are failing to serve. When landlords neglect families from receiving their basic needs, it is your duty to hold them accountable and protect our community. During these times, we no longer accept silence. This decision, again, tonight, will tell the people of Durham what your values are and if you are for the people or not. I urge you to prioritize affordable housing and the living conditions of tenants that deserve to live with dignity and respect. This is the responsible, conscious way to protect the health and well-being of taxpayers that allow you and your family to live in a home with water, heater, no pest infestation or mold, and many more commodities. It is only fair that the Durham residents receive equitable access to the same opportunities that you have every single day. And with all due respect, you should be ashamed of saying that it's his fault or any student's fault. This is the fault of a system that is failing the youth, that is failing our communities.
Well, that was an interesting spin, but students, I hope you know what I mean. Next.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Forrest Stralley. I serve as the Government Affairs Director for the Durham Regional Association of Realtors. We represent more than 1,000 real estate professionals in our community who are committed to safe, fair, and stable housing. We appreciate and share the city's commitment to ensuring that every resident has access to a safe and livable home. The city has already established clear protections to ensure that tenants are not subjected to unsafe living conditions. It seems those aren't being enforced at this time, and we understand and applaud the efforts that offer tenant protections, but this ordinance as written does not accomplish that. Instead, this will further burden city staff and landlords that strive to be accountable with duplicative language. Furthermore, this council continues to increase enforcement measures but has not provided further staffing resources. Other cities have enacted similar language that have not been enforced or tested it, resulting in unsubstantiated use case. Tenant protections could include adding clearer definitions of dangerous housing conditions, expanding emergency repair tools, or developing education efforts that empower tenants to exercise the rights that they have under state law. Let me be clear, we do support exploring paths to strengthen tenant protections that provide adequate safeguards and enforcement. Durham's Realtors are ready to partner with the city, housing advocates, and community stakeholders to identify solutions that truly protect tenants while maintaining a fair, consistent, and lawful housing framework. Thank you for your time and for your continued attention to housing safety in Durham.
I'll ask that we please be respectful, please. Ms. Williams, you want to go ahead? Okay, that's fine. Okay.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Leonardo Williams, and neighbors. I'm Cynthia Williams, Chair of the Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit of Durham, representing over 40 organizations and hundreds of residents who believe housing should be safe, healthy, and just. We support, we being cat, support the ordinance introduced by the Riverside High School Affordable Housing Club. The students have done what many adults have tried and failed to do. Respond meaningfully to renters' pleas for help. Mold, rodents, broken heat, these aren't minor annoyances. They're threats to health and dignity, and they're happening in Durham today. We understand the city attorney's concerns, but let's be clear, Durham already has housing codes on the books, and they are not working. Renters are living with mold, infestations, and broken heat, and too often, the enforcement mechanisms in place fail to protect them. This ordinance may not be perfect, but it's a necessary signal that the city will no longer look away when homes become uninhabitable. Councilmember Chelsea Cook's leadership is courageous. She's not ignoring legal risks, she's refusing to ignore human ones. Nearly half of Durham households, that is 49%, are renters. That's how many people this ordinance could help in a worst-case situation. The scale of need is too large to dismiss. If this passes, please pair the ordinance with tenant education and legal support. But if this ordinance vote fails tonight, we ask that you commit to a real resolution. Do not kick the can down the road. Doing nothing is neutral, isn't neutral, it's siding with neglect. The Coalition stands with the students, the renters, and every Durham resident who believes housing should heal, not harm. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Anthony Snell. I am the interim CEO of Durham Housing Authority. As you well know, DHA is the owner of roughly 1,900 units of affordable housing in the city of Durham, with an additional 1,000-plus units under development. We fervently are, we are fervently committed to providing decent, safe, and affordable housing to the residents, to our residents and the citizens of Durham. As a federally funded entity, we must follow the federal mandate to collect rent from our residents. Not doing so violates the law and compromises the viability and security of our properties. We believe there are already adequate city and state measures and safeguards in place to ensure the quality of housing that we provide. These include the city's inspection system, HUD Housing Quality Standards inspections, and our housing, for our Housing Choice voucher program, and our project-based rental assistance units. We also have the annual HUD Rental Assistance Assessment Center inspections, and the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency inspects a large part of our portfolio as well. There is also a state rebate statute that is well-known and commonly used. In additions, they are, there is a rental abatement regulation under our Housing Choice voucher program. As the owner of a portfolio of assets that are older and reaching their useful life, we are uniquely challenged to maintain these assets. Our funding sources are structurally inadequate and diminishing annually. We are committed to maintaining this housing stock and replacing it as quickly as possible. We are in the midst of a very large program for our public housing. We have secured an additional $10 million to make those corrections. We ask that as you look at...
Thank you. Thank you. Oh. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So, what we will, what we will not do, we will not, we will not do that. We have to protect the space for everybody to have a voice. You can acknowledge that. No, we will not be rude. Just cannot do that. There's no way in the world that we come together as a community to address an issue for our tenants and only let one side speak. This is your house. This is the people's house. So please be respectful. Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you.
Jackie Waxstaff, Angenee Bell.
Are you ready?
And Elizabeth Arant. Next.
Can I ask one thing? Could you turn the air down? I think you're trying to freeze us out. I'm here tonight in support of the ordinance as it is written by Councilwoman Cooks, but I'm also here to give you a little history lesson. Back in the '90s, when I sat on this diocese, we experienced this same problem. We were, I know about Juniper Square, I think, Real Estate and Associates and Joe Jernigan, and they still run that property. So we, we know about this, and we've had these discussions. I wish we had this ordinance on the books when we were fighting for these things to change in these apartments and these rental properties. I remember when, these stories I'm hearing about how these properties, these conditions, I remember calling All Out Inspections, sitting on this diocese, and we had every person that we had in our housing department go out and inspect these deplorable units. And we found so many violations. I know that the gang of four doesn't have the courage to do that, and the gang of three can't do it, but it makes no sense that these residents have to pay market rent to live in your landfill dumps, because that's what they are. I just believe that tonight, that four of you are gonna try to play games with this ordinance, and I'm gonna stand by that. I think you're gonna try to WordPress it. I think you're gonna try to take some stuff out to make sure that the landlords are covered. But I know right now, on Ridgeway Avenue, there is a structure, has no lights, no waters, families are living in them, and there is a landlord collecting rent from these residents. You need to go check that out. But there's a lot of other things I could discuss, but right now, I just know that there is a gang of four up here that is gonna vote either for this...
Thank you.
...the way you want it, or against this the way they want it. But you know, there's an election. Go to the polls and vote them out.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Angenee Bell. As a proud member of North Carolina Central University, I also want to extend my sincere congratulations to the NCCU tennis team on their recent success. I also want to say that I support much of what has been shared by the speakers tonight. Why am I here? Tonight, as one who serves and prioritizes people and purpose over profit, I'm standing in full support of the tenants' rights ordinance that Council Member Chelsea Cook is leading forward. Durham deserves quality housing and quality landlords. This ordinance helps ensure both. It makes clear that safety, maintenance, and dignity are not optional. They are the standard. This ordinance is a step forward affirming that renters are not second-class citizens. It is a step toward ensuring that safe, stable, and dignified housing is treated as a right, not a privilege. It is a step toward aligning our policies with our values, because a city that grows without protecting its people is not truly growing at all. This ordinance does not solve everything, but it signals that Durham is ready to do better by its residents. It says that to every tenant who has been ignored, intimidated, or displaced, "We see you. We are moving in your direction." Durham's progress must be measured not by buildings alone, but by belonging, by the security people feel when they turn their key in the door day or night. Tonight, this council has an opportunity to stand on the side of respect, fairness, and responsibility, to say that in Durham, housing will meet the quality our people deserve. This city must also commit to the resources, infrastructure, and enforcement needed to fully support and uphold this ordinance. I urge you to vote yes. This is how we build a better Durham for everyone.
Thank you.
Maslos high art your needs. I'm not gonna be, I'm just gonna say this. I'm not gonna be negative at all. Okay.
Ms. Lyons?
Physical, psychological needs.
Ms. Lyons?
Like breathing, food, water.
Ms. Lyons?
Safety, security, health, employment, property, family, and social... Love and belonging, friendship, family, intimacy.
Ms. Lyons? Ms. Lyons? Okay, we're in recess until 9:10. Recession until 9:10. We'll be back.
Falling behind on your bills? Even if you owe more than you can handle, you still have rights. Most legit debt collectors follow the rules, but bad debt collectors don't. They break the law. So if you get a call like this...
If you don't pay, we will have you arrested and deported.
Or this...
This is your final warning. Pay up now, or we'll contact your employer and make them pay.
Hang up and report it to the Federal Trade Commission. You have the right to be treated fairly no matter what. That means debt collectors can't use abusive language, threaten violence, or harass you. Or call you before 8:00 in the morning or after 9:00 at night. They can't lie or pretend to be someone they're not.
I'm an attorney, and we'll take legal action if you don't pay this debt right away.
Or get you to pay a debt that doesn't even exist. They can't have you arrested or deported or tell anyone about your debt. Bad debt collectors like to knock you off your guard to get an advantage, create a sense of urgency, and rush you. They'll say anything to get you to pay right now. Instead, hang up and report it to the Federal Trade Commission at ftc.gov/complaint. We've stopped a lot of bad debt collectors. Help us stop more. For more information about debt collection, visit consumer.gov/debt.
Se está atrasando con el pago de sus facturas? Aunque deba más de lo que pueda pagar, igual sigue teniendo derechos. La mayoría de los cobradores de deudas legítimos cumplen las reglas, pero los malos cobradores de deudas no lo hacen, infrigen la ley. Así que si recibe una llamada como esta...
Si no paga, lo haremos arrestar y deportar.
O como esta...
Esta es su última advertencia. Pague ya, o nos comunicaremos con su empleador para obligarlo a pagar.
Cuelgue el teléfono y reporte el incidente a la Comisión Federal de Comercio, FTC. Usted tiene derecho a ser tratado justamente de todas maneras. Eso significa que los cobradores de deudas no pueden usar lenguaje abusivo, amenazarlo con violencia, ni acosarlo. Ni tampoco pueden llamarlo antes de las 8:00 de la mañana o después de las 9:00 de la noche. No pueden mentir ni hacerse pasar por quienes no son.
Soy abogado, y si no paga esta deuda de inmediato, entablaré una acción legal en su contra.
O hacerle pagar una deuda que ni siquiera existe. No lo pueden hacer arrestar, ni deportarlo. Ni tampoco pueden hablar con nadie sobre su deuda. A los malos cobradores de deudas les gusta atacarlo con la guardia baja para sacar ventaja, crear una sensación de urgencia y apurarlo. Dirán lo que sea para conseguir que pague de inmediato. En su lugar, cuelgue el teléfono y reporte el incidente a la Comisión Federal de Comercio FTC en ftc.gov/deuda. Ya hemos frenado a muchos malos cobradores de deudas. Ayúdenos a frenar más. Para más información sobre cobranza de deudas, visite consumidor.gov/deuda.
If everyone could please take their seats, let's get the doors closed. I'll give us a few more minutes, a few more seconds to just get everyone inside. Thank you all so much. We will continue. And this is a... This, this, this topic that we're discussing tonight is, you know, what, what folks are living in on a daily basis. Some people, and, and I have a lot of grace for that passion. So I did need to recess us, which we were about to do in about five minutes after that anyway. So just recess us a little earlier. And I hope that no one out there is judging any resident by their passion, but having grace for what some people have to go through. And I've known Ms. Lyons for years, and I'm glad we were able to have a conversation. But please have grace. And also, if we can please just be respectful to every voice in the room on this. This, this is... I, I don't want us to be a, a city or a council that is represented by just damning each other, but more so taking the hard road to, you know, trying to make sure we get the best outcome for the least of the. That's what it should be all about. So I would ask you that you, you... I mean, you're here. You're in the room. That means you give a dang. So let's just have grace and have respect for one another. And, you know, I'm, I'm not the type of mayor that's going to go back and forth with you. I'm not going to argue with you. I'm not going to do all those things. I'm, I'm just going to humbly ask that we be mutually respectful. And if I need to stop the meeting until things get in a better situation, then I will. All right. Get back to it. Before, well, you know what? Mr. Rock, you've been waiting. So I'm going to call you up, and then I'll call the final speakers. Welcome.
Good.
Two minutes. Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Hope you all had a good break. I appreciate the call for respect in this room. And I understand that respect is highly valued by the council, but I also want to acknowledge that respect is care. And a lot of the folks who are speaking out tonight have not received respect through the care and the support that they have been given and the basic infrastructure. And so I think respect is, does have to be mutual. And I do, I support this amendment because it is a way to show respect and care for all of our neighbors in all of our community. I honestly have had a hard time thinking what to say tonight because this amendment just seems, as Ms. Wallace said, like a no-brainer. It's hard to conceive of why you would oppose this amendment. I, I understand that there is some existing infrastructure to pursue your rights as a tenant, but generally, it's hard to enforce your own rights when you're living in such a vulnerable condition, where your health and safety are on the line every day, and it can be very time-consuming and expensive to pursue your rights in that way. And one thing that makes an immediate impact is money. And if landlords aren't receiving rent for the goods or services that they are not providing, then they are going to take action to make amends on that, which is why I feel confident about this amendment and the impact it will have. And I just want to, I just want to say that I think this benefits everyone in Durham, and the positive effects are going to be widespread because this affects health outcomes. This affects homelessness. This affects the health of our, of our neighborhoods, both physically and emotionally and socially. I know folks who are experiencing houselessness, who their only option for housing at this point is actually a step down because if they were to move into some of these buildings, they would be living in unsafe, dangerous conditions and also paying money to live that way. And so it's actually a more logical choice to remain unhoused. So these are unforgivable conditions for our city and our community. So I hope you'll consider this amendment and support it.
Thank you. Leslie St. Dre, can you hear me? Leslie St. Dre, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Hi.
Hey, welcome. You have three, uh, two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I'm, I'm here also in support of this amendment. I think, as everyone has said, it is basic. These folks that are suffering the most should not be paying for squalor. I don't really even know why this is a debate. These are, these are things that should have been done long ago. And I think this council has prioritized developers, landlords, and market rate housing, and continuously says there's nothing we can do because of statewide preemption, yet never tries to do anything. And this ordinance shows that there is, there are things that we can do to protect tenants. And it's, it's time that, that tenants and residents in general of Durham are the priority, not landlords, not developers. So I stand with the tenants always. In general, all the rent they're paying in is an investment in their home. They're not seeing any returns. In effect, it is theft by the landlords, taking all of their hard-earned labor for profits. So the least that this council could do is to protect them. And then next, it should be to organize, to overturn those state laws that prevent us from having major protections like real rent control. So yeah, I stand with the tenants, stand against developers taking our entire city, stand against the Unified Development Ordinance. We need affordable housing first. We need livable units first. We need representatives who represent the people first. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last two speakers I have is Amy and Neemal Ret. Madam Clerk. Okay. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Could you approach the dais, please? Welcome. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Amy, and I'm speaking in strong support of the ordinance that would allow residents to withhold their rent when they're forced to live in unsafe or uninhabitable conditions. I want to share my experience here in Durham. I moved to Woodlake Reserve, a private apartment complex, last year. And I thought that I was finally going to get a fresh start after graduating from UNC. It was advertised as a move-in-ready unit. And the moment that I walked in, I was hit with the smell of cigarette, smoke so strong that it burned just like my eyes. The place was filthy. I have a, I have an asthma condition, and within days, I was struggling to breathe. I had to take time off work just to go in person and beg them, basically, to do something. When they finally, like, addressed the issue, I found that they addressed the issue wrong. So I had to take, basically, clean the whole apartment myself because I could not, like, afford a hotel or move again. And that exposure caused my first asthma attack in years. So I documented everything in a Google overview for all of us to see. But I know I'm not the only one. And some people here shared their experiences that are far worse than mine. People have died because of unsafe living conditions. And I just want to ask that, just like, please pass this ordinance. And when we're talking about respect, some corporations and CEOs here get some more time, but yet, that time is not allotted to us. When we're speaking from our truth, from our experiences, this is life and death situations for a lot of people, working-class people that cannot afford just to move somewhere else. So please, just pass this ordinance. Common sense.
One moment. Okay, welcome.
Hi, I'm Naya. Thanks for taking the time to listen to me. I just find it interesting how, this entire evening, you ask us not to applaud to asking us to have decorum in order, but when it comes to these landlords, you aren't demanding it of them. I support this amendment because people shouldn't have to subject themselves to having to clean up a place that they pay for when it is the job of the landlord to take care of it. So I hope that you consider going forward with this amendment. And yeah.
I'm just waiting for it to start at 2:00.
Yeah, yeah. Welcome.
Okay. Hi, my name is Maya, and I'm a resident of Durham. For two years, I've had the misfortune of living in the Duke Manor Apartment Complex. I would like to talk about my experience as a tenant in Duke Manor, which will explain why I am in favor of this ordinance. Since March 2025, there have been six water outages in my apartment. After the first outage in March, the water from my kitchen and bathroom faucets were brown. The property management told me that brown water is normal after an outage due to pipe repairs. And they suggested that I run the water faucets for 10 minutes to clear out the sediments in the pipes. I did just that, but the water continued to remain brown for months. I sent at least six to seven maintenance requests to test the water quality in my apartment. The first three times, maintenance workers unclogged my shower drain, which is not what I asked for. The fourth time, a worker took a water sample in a plastic bottle, told me they would test it, but never got back to me. Five months later, Duke Manor drained sediment from my water heater. And six months later, they finally bought a water testing kit, but it was one of those $10 ones from Home Depot. It has been six months, and I have yet to receive a comprehensive solution to a basic problem. I still paid rent on time for all of those six months, and I exhausted so many options. I made calls, I wrote emails, I visited the office, and I left negative online reviews. And each time, I was dismissed. For this reason, I support adding Ordinance F to Section 10241 tonight. Instead of fighting an uphill battle in a legal court against my landlord, I should be able to get Durham Code Enforcement, a third neutral party, to determine if my water is potable. I cannot afford legal action. I need this ordinance to be passed so I can have clean water in my apartment. Thank you.
There were a few, these last few speakers were overlooked, so I'm just making sure we get everyone in.
Good evening, Mayor Leo, and honored representatives. I'm Jan Hasbrook. I'm a 43-year resident of Durham and chair of the Durham Regional Association of Realtors Government Affairs Committee. And I'm speaking about our municipality in the context of a national administration that's cutting government wherever it can. We currently have 50% more of our population in rentership than nationally. So for protecting property rights, it's essential that those tenants be treated not only with respect, but with dignity. And so we have laws on the books right now that make it criminal, a criminal act, to provide unsafe and uninhabitable living conditions. What this ordinance does is it removes the criminal implications for landlords who are, who are victimizing their tenants that way. I'm concerned about this ordinance's inability to have been tracked in the court system, although, although Pittsburgh and Charlotte have got it on their books, it hasn't been tested. And I guess the biggest reason I have for opposing this amendment the way it's written is that our own city attorney says, "Don't pass it." Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker is Brian Holiday. Yeah, Brian, Brian Holiday.
All right, thank you so much. Wow, I'm at the end. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Brian Holiday. I'm here on behalf of the Triangle Apartment Association. Our membership has worked with you guys in the past. We've presented with you in the past. We consist of 173 apartment communities here in Durham, and that's over 40,000 residential homes. Today, there are actually some of our members here in, in the audience today who are part of our membership. Two minutes is not enough to get done what I need to say. We actually have a letter, and we're going to present that to you guys to go through. What we're big-ass is today is we want to be able to participate in the conversation. We feel like we haven't been able to participate. You know, the high school kids, one of the big things that happens when you have policy debates is you have to be able to look through it through different lenses. And you have to understand the different perspectives, and that's important. So thanks for bringing the conversation forward. I would also say, an important thing of having a policy debate is brains. So don't be a no-brainer. There is a brain situation that has to come in. So in the letter that comes in, we have some issues that we like to present. Real quick, I'm going to run through these, but they are documented out in this letter. First of all, these current protections already exists. Residents can report these concerns to code enforcement, which has the powers, including fines. There's also state laws that currently exist. Secondly, these ordinances risk confusion. North Carolina law requires a court determination before rent can be withheld. It has been said many times already today, this gives them the opportunity to hold rent. There is so much confusion. We need to have this conversation go throughout. Also, lastly, there's a due process piece that is missing. That needs to go through. I think that we are at the beginning stages of it. It was said earlier tonight that we want to make sure this feels ready to go on a different policy procedure. We want to ultimately get it done right. And so what I would encourage everyone is that we have those conversations. Thank you very much. I'm asking you to participate!
Thank you, thank you, thank you. It's our last speaker. And at this time, I will, at this time, I'll refer, bring this back before the council. And thank everyone for your, for your remarks. I will say, as we are, as we're getting into this, I do want to appreciate everyone's remarks, and I appreciate folks just showing up and being a part of this conversation. What you're about to experience now is the council is going to share their deliberation. We're going to deliberate. We're going to talk about it. And then we'll, I'll entertain a motion for us to move forward with this. The council hasn't taken a position on it yet. So I know there are some remarks saying that, you know, we are... Folks, I truly believe, especially since I've had conversations with the council, we're all on the same page and trying to make sure that our tenants are... Those of us especially who rent are, are getting the best outcome here. So Councilmember Cook, you facilitated bringing this before. Someone always starts my left, mostly, but I'll start with you.
Thank you. I'd actually like to speak last, if that's okay.
Okay. Councilmember Baker.
It is our job up here to protect, first and foremost, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of Durham. And what better way to do that than to address the largest household expense, on average, for everyone who lives in this city and everyone who lives in this country, which is housing? We know the statistics about the number and percentage of people who are housing cost burden. It is large, and it is growing. And it has been growing for many years, and some people call this a housing crisis. It has become a housing crisis even for middle-class people. It has always been a housing crisis for low-income people. And our method that we have, the tools that we have at our disposal, we have policymaking, we have the police powers that are delegated to us by the state of North Carolina. And there are rare opportunities that come before us because of creative thinking, because of the conditions that people live in, and organizing, and people coming forward and putting things on the table. Rarely do these opportunities come to us. Rarely do we have opportunities to think bigger and on a larger scale across our entire city and not just in a piecemeal or smaller-scale way. We know exactly how to make housing a human right. Society knows exactly how to do it. We build a massive amount of social or public housing that's beautiful, that's affordable, and that everyone can live in. We know that we can do that. We know that rent control is one of the most powerful ways to make sure that people can afford the place that they live and not get evicted. We know that there are tools out there that exist, and we know that we don't have those things because our state, first and foremost, because our state and our federal government don't want us to have those things. Because they want to limit the amount of resources that we have available to us to be able to build great, beautiful, public, affordable housing for everyone. They want to make sure, the state, for example, wants to make sure we don't have the tools thanks to industrial lobbying to enact minimum wage laws, price controls, minimum wage laws, and rent control. They know that these are effective tools for keeping people in their homes, and we don't have that power because it was specifically prohibited from us. So it is rare opportunities that thanks to creativity and organizing that we do have something before us using police powers that can actually affect our entire city and everyone who lives here when it comes to the greatest household expense that everyone, that the average household has. We also know that this is a winning issue. Poll after poll shows that working-class people want great affordable housing, want price controls on housing, want protections against landlords who want to provide poor quality, provide poor-quality housing, and retaliate against residents who want to organize. And even in states and places that have those limitations, we see increasingly incredible organizing. Kansas City Tenant Union, LA Tenant Union, tenant unions growing across the country, and now here, growing here in the Triangle, Triangle Tenant Union, and so many others who are saying, no, 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 we're going to organize our building, we're going to organize our neighborhood, and we're going to push back. So that is happening. One day, we will overturn these laws. One day, we will organize and make sure that everyone can have great social housing, that the state of North Carolina no longer has these rent control prohibitions. One day, we will reach that. And until then, we have moments like this, moments where we find a hole and a gap that we can fill. So I'm excited about this common sense, as it's been stated, common sense ordinance that adds a modest tool, a modest tool in a tool bag. Because we need every tool that we can possibly grasp for on the table. And this is one of those tools that is added to the tool bag. People shouldn't have to pay landlords when the quality of their housing is inadequate, is unsafe, is unhealthy. This will not apply to the majority of housing in our city. That's an important thing. I don't think most landlords should be worried about this. Those landlords that are worried about this should make themselves known. I would like to know, to know who they are. This ordinance doesn't regulate rent. It doesn't. It addresses rent, but it doesn't, it doesn't regulate rent. It simply helps to ensure that people are living in safe and healthy housing conditions. And lastly, I just want to say thank you to everyone who has come out in support of this, but also to those who were here at the ground floor and who really helped push for this. And I also want to say thank you to my colleague, Chelsea Cook. The community did a lot of work, brought this to light, brought this to attention. And Councilmember Cook put the deal on the table and has championed it, and has championed it very well. So I want to say thank you to Councilmember Cook for the work that she has done in really pushing this forward. And lastly, I do, I do support this language and look forward to voting for it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions for the city, well, actually, first for Councilmember Cook. In the ordinance as presented, there's the second page, which is the list of items, and then in the attorney's memo, we talked about this a little bit at the work session. Is there a reason why we wouldn't want to do the list as stated in the attorney's memo?
Just pulling them both up.
Huh?
I just have to pull them both up?
Oh, good.
Sorry. Councilmember Cook, could I get you to move your mic closer to you? Great. Thank you. Apparently, I'm needing a lot of assistance, so that's good. Okay. They are not exactly identical, and I do remember that there were a couple issues with the ones that, with some of the ones that were missing from the attorney's version. And let me just remind myself here. And if anybody has the answer to this readily available, feel free to assist.
Yeah, if the city attorney could, my understanding was because they brought the list that was in the original memo to our actual code enforcement officials, and the list that was provided was based on their expertise as to what they actually see out in the field as code enforcement. That was what I remember from the work session, but I was just wanting to make sure that that is true.
If I could respond, yes, that is, the attorney's office worked with staff to develop the list based on the code enforcement that they typically identify.
Thank you. So I have one friendly amendment to the ordinance as stands. I would like to swap out the list from the original memo, the original ordinance, with the list that the city attorney's office provided. My belief is that that's based on more Durham context, and so I think, I think would be helpful. Additionally, I do want to figure out the issue around what the Durham Housing Authority mentioned, and so there is some potential additional language, which is in Section 10-241, unless otherwise preempted by state or federal law. That is another thing I would like to add to the ordinance that is in front of us, and that's all I have for right now. I'll continue.
Ms. Turner, are you catching, are you capturing this?
And I want to continue hearing from colleagues. I think that, and I understand folks' frustrations with DHA, that that is real and legitimate. We have had to, quite frankly, bail them out with public money several times. But they are still a landlord that is incredibly important, and we are in a very active partnership with them. In many communities, as their housing authorities have not been getting the necessary funds from the federal government, as the federal government has abandoned the federal housing program, a lot of those units just go offline, right? As code enforcement comes in, it's determined that they can't be, you know, fixed, the maintenance is too big, the money's not there, and so those units just go offline. What does that mean? It just means that they don't exist in the community. It's not like they're replaced, and we're actively trying to do something different in Durham. It's one of the reasons that you're seeing so many housing authority properties turning over, and it's one of the reasons that so much of that was included in the Affordable Housing Bond in 2019. We're in the middle of that. Obviously, we're not done, but there are thousands of new, very nice units coming online in the next several years. And so it's hard to be in that position with our housing authority. The maintenance that is due in some of the older buildings, we certainly don't have the local funds, and those funds are not coming from the federal government. So I do want to think through carefully how we negotiate that with them, but I want to hear what other colleagues have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. I just had a question. I wanted to follow up with the Durham Housing Authority representative. And I'll first say, I do think that it's probably going to do some damage to the actual ordinance to add or change that list, and so I do think it's important that it stays the same way that it was presented so that you keep in line with Pittsburgh and Charlotte. But I just wanted to, to just follow up with, with your commentary. When you do inspections for rental units that are under, not, it's separate with the vouchers, if the landlord has mold or leakage, what happens?
For those units that do not pass inspection, they go into abatement.
And what does that mean?
That means that they don't receive their federal subsidy.
And that federal subsidy is rent?
Yes.
On the part of DHA?
Yes.
What happens to the resident?
The resident will stay in their unit, so we're talking about the Housing Choice voucher program. And so there's an opportunity for that unit, for, to, for the improvements that take to their unit, but as long, if the landlord does not make those improvements, they will not receive their rent from DHA.
Okay. And so if that improvement takes three to six months, what happens?
And then, because we do, we are not part of the lease, that is an agreement between the landlord and the resident, then the resident has the right at that point to take whatever legal action is available to them regarding the conditions of their unit.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I would just say that I think similar to our earlier conversation about quorum, you know, ADUs, if you just viewed it as an opportunity to do a pilot and just see for a year, we could revisit the ordinance as it is written without any problem. I think it's, it's fair, just based on the way that it's been presented from the students in the community and Councilmember Cook. I really want to appreciate, I watched about four and a half of the six and a half hours of your meeting that I missed, and I do believe that there were really good comments made and lots of questions about why or how to change the way that it was written. And what I'm most concerned about in any of those changes is that the city taxpayer becomes on the hook for doing the repairs. And so I don't want us to move into the area where we're trying to abate the abatement. So we're not trying to fix it for the landlord, we're trying to make sure that the tenant has the best tools and options to make sure that their court case can move forward. And in everything that I heard from the meeting, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, but, but I do think that this would be, the way that it is written, the ordinance that was presented, would be the best way to move forward. So I'll leave it at that for now. I'm definitely listening. I do want to say that I think Councilmember, I'm the mayor pro temp Middleton's comment about if these types of tools were available when he was a youngster and projects, it might have been different, you know, not having roaches crawling on you and all that good stuff that happens when you have that infestation. But I do want to say that it is, it is, it's incredibly difficult to listen to folks be chastised about respect on it, knowing that they are living, as a, as a former healthy housing trainer, train-the-trainer, like, all of those things, going into some of these houses in this city, it's been incredibly hard to see how children in our community have to live. The holes in the floor, the holes in the ceiling, the leaks, the broken toilet, like, all of the things that happen. And if we have an opportunity to make sure we shift the balance of power in the direction so that the tenant has a little bit more of an opportunity to, to, to be abated, or to, to be, like, essentially in a safe home, I think that that's something we should, we should definitely try to do. And like I said, it could just be a pilot. We can look at it. It's an ordinance that can be changed in the future. I think that, you know, given a year or two years, council will be different, but it just gives us a chance to see whether or not this would work, and that would be my, my hope for this council. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to make sure I inject, I want to protect the integrity of our debate here. Not even debate our conversation, and there is no one in this room being chastised about respect. We're saying mutually respect one another, and I want to keep that in context. It's dangerous to take it out of context.
I appreciate that. I think the tone may have just been off, but I appreciate what you're saying.
Pardon my tone, but I want to make sure we're mutually respectful, like we are right now. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thanks to all the folks who came out tonight for your passion, for the intensity, the time you spent for this meeting. I think what you're hearing here in the council is that everyone in this council supports greater support for tenants in Durham. Everyone in this council supports increasing support for tenants in Durham. We know, I know, the data shows that half of our renters in Durham are housing cost burden. That's real. It's a big issue. I also want to just point, and one of the speakers said, we're not doing anything for affordable housing for renters. I think you just heard me talk at the beginning of this meeting. On this agenda alone, 160 units in the Pageant Apartments, all affordable at 60% AMI, no city subsidy, right? Another $2 million the city is putting into the Durham Affordable Housing Loan Fund to acquire rental properties that are coming out of tax credit status so we can bridge those over to affordable housing providers. The quorum, the ADUs, there's a lot of things we're doing for affordable housing, this council cares. I want to thank Milo for the research. Good to see you, Milo. Great stuff. We've had a lot of discussion here and at the work session about this issue, a lot of good discussion, which I really appreciate. I get, and I appreciate the folks from the Triangle Apartments Association who described that there are, there are means on the books for folks, but it does require court determination. And I get that that, for people who don't have the resources and time to go to a court or a board to get that determination, that's a big factor, right? That's a big hurdle. So I appreciate that. I have one question actually, if Italo could approach the mic from the tenants' union, I do want to understand, because I think you referenced like three amendments that I don't see in my packet, so I want to make sure I understand the three amendments you referenced.
Thank you, Councilmember Rist. So the three amendments, did you have the, the original memo in response to the city attorney's memo on you?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
That should be the last section, Section 4C, and it talks about the Danzy Court decision that we talked about in our first work session. And those are just minor drafting changes that would bring in, in addition of a notice period, which wouldn't substantially change the ordinance at all. It would bring in a knowledge standard, both actual and constructive. And then it would also, and those two, in speaking with council members, you know, that's for you all to debate, but it seems that it's already in the municipal code. So that might be for somebody, somebody else to talk through. And then the third one would be an opportunity to cure, so giving landlords the opportunity to cure the defect, and we believe that 48 hours is a reasonable time. And that actually helps us because what we want is for these defects to be cured. So if we're telling them, yeah, 48 hours, and they're going to cure them, great, we want that.
Thank you, appreciate that. So is that, is Councilmember Cook, is that part of the, is that part of what we now have before us, or is that something that would need to be added? I want to make sure where that, where those amendments stand.
Those amendments have not been added. That's, that was the attorneys saying suggestions. That's, that was the attorneys saying suggestions. I would, I would suggest that because it is in the code, there is already necessitated notice and knowledge because this is a city code ordinance. And the way that we do our city code is that we have city code inspectors who do the inspection and give, provide notice to the landowners. I spoke earlier with the attorney, and I'm willing to entertain a notice period, but a short one that reflects the imminently dangerous conditions language that's in the state statute. And so I think 48 hours would be appropriate.
Is this what we spoke about?
Yes.
Yeah. So some due diligence before we got here tonight, I knew I had spoken about some amendments.
So are you going to propose that, or, okay, that's great. Thanks for answering that. And then I, you know, you all, I do serve as a liaison to the Durham Housing Authority. And I appreciate Mr. Snell being here. I do support what Councilmember Cook said about the clause that would say unless, unless, sorry about that, unless otherwise preempted by state or federal law, adding that clause before the language. So I would support that amendment. Yeah, Durham Housing Authority, y'all, this is, this is our housing authority. They serve, I think the number's like 10,000 people every day that otherwise would have no access to housing. So the Durham Housing Authority, it's, they're building a better housing authority. We're working with them. It's a complicated, difficult environment because federal funding has been cut, but there are 10,000 people every day that live in public housing. And it's, it's our people. And as Councilmember Cooper has said, a lot of cities just say, "Look, it's a federal responsibility. We're not into it." And those units essentially get decommissioned, right? So we're trying our best to maintain units for folks and get that some of that housing is aging housing. I want to work with Housing Authority. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Don't go far. And when I share my remarks, I'm going to ask you to come back up anyway, so, just, but it'll be, it'll be last.
Go back. [laughter] Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, colleagues. Firstly, I want to celebrate the tradition of student activism for bringing things to bear. You stand in the tradition of Royal Ice Cream protesters and Woolworths protesters and the young people that were attacked by dogs and fire hoses. It was high school students that brought one of the cases that led to Brown v. Board of Education. So you are in good company tonight, and you've done a marvelous thing. I also want to just say how excited Charlotte must be tonight that finally Durham is copying them rather than, rather than Charlotte copying us. They take our staff, they take our ideas up in Charlotte, so I'm sure they're having a good night seeing how we are seeking to model them. I'll very simply, colleagues, repeat what I actually said at the work session last time. Firstly, I thanked Councilmember Cook for her, her passion and leadership in this. I did indeed say that I wish I had people with this passion when I was growing up in public housing. What I actually said was that I support this ordinance. That's what I actually said, and our, our meetings are archived. You can go back and watch. I also had some questions, which were asked and answered. I know that there are some, some challenges I expressed also, that I don't think we should overstate what success has looked like with respect to this ordinance. But there is something important. I think that the very specter, that there may be some governmental action, actual use, the specter of police power, if not actually using police power, but the specter of it. If it can put tenants in a better position to leverage it to get some positive outcomes, then why wouldn't I support it? I do also want to say that, in fairness to our, our friends and colleagues around the state, common sense is one thing when it's stated, but when we try and govern it and legislate it, there are some devil in the details. This is so common sense that out of 500 municipalities, only two of them have it. Because this is an area that takes courage. This is an area that a lot of our colleagues around the state don't want to take on the fight. They don't want to take on the challenges. So Durham should just pause for a moment. I know this is a rigorous debate and back and forth, but it's okay to just bask for a few moments. And the fact that we are stepping out on something that seems commonsensical, but there's so few people that have done it, if it's so commonsensical. And that's because sometimes legislating common sense takes courage. It's take, it takes values. It takes stepping out of a, of a comfort zone, which is what we are doing. So I, again, I celebrate everyone that has come out here tonight. We have to tell the truth. This has not been enforced. We will have some questions, and we will run into some issues. You need to hear that. We owe that to you as fiduciaries of the city, as the folk who you've put in this position, not to just make speeches or throw out catchphrases, but to actually govern. You pay us. You, you, you tell us to stay up at night to think about the things that you don't think about so you can raise your families and pay your bills and live your life. You have delegated that to us, and we owe it to you to ask these questions. We owe it to you to poke and prod. We owe it to you to see where there's weakness and where there's strength. That, that's our job. And that's the cost of being up on this dais with all the other stuff that comes with it. So I think we've done that, and I think we've done that at the last work session. But if this can help, in even a small way, put tenants in a position to leverage, if the specter of government action is raised and it can help tenants, then I support it. That's what I said then. That's what I stand by tonight. Thank you.
Just want to address a few things first. I've been back through the list, and I had already done this, but my notes are in 7,000 places. I don't see any need to substitute the list. We are missing in the city attorney's list several things that were provided in the original ordinance. That includes the, number one, the 234 H1, which is structures, the entirety of number four, which is unsafe ceiling or roofs, and then most of number 11, which is the unsafe door locks. And again, we've written, and I want to say really clearly, I did not write this. This has been something that I have been talking about. If you go back to my, well, don't do this because it was like the worst I've ever spoken in public, but if you did go back to my interview, was, got the appointment for this position, I talked about adding teeth to, back to NIS. Our city code inspectors used to have the ability to, to enforce their inspections. We did use to have a criminalized component to that. That code was stripped from, or the criminalization component was stripped by the state. And I had talked in my initial interview about bringing more teeth to it. But I want to be really clear, even though this is a conversation I've been having for a really long time, the draft of this ordinance came from the Riverside High School Affordable Housing Group, and they deserve all of the credit in the world, particularly Milo Graber, who's here tonight, who spoke earlier. Incredible work. So I guess it's confusing to me why we continue to kind of like try and poke holes in it. The reason for this list, and though it is specific, of course, to the Durham Municipal Code, it more or less reflects the code that exists in Charlotte and has existed and been used for over a decade and was, in fact, recodified relatively recently. This is the safest way to do it, is the code as written in front of us tonight. And so for those reasons, I'm not willing to switch out the list. And I spoke earlier on the time to cure. I think that if that is something that will bring folks to the table, and I'll ask specifically, I think the mayor and I talked about this earlier, if he would vote for it, if it had a 48-hour curing, then I am willing to include it, to get more support behind it. But I want to speak to the other amendments that have been suggested, particularly the one regarding the housing authority. I have a few things to say about that. The first is that we had the interim executive director up here talking about what happens when a voucher house falls into abatement. And I want to be really, really clear about what happens. There is a triangle relationship when the housing authority has a voucher. The housing authority has a relationship with the landlord. The housing authority has a relationship with the tenant, and the landlord and the tenant have a relationship. So you've got the three parts of this triangle. And so when a unit is in abatement, as in they fail any part of the housing authority's inspection, the housing authority stops paying that rent. And what it means is that a tenant has to figure out what to do. And if you know anything about Durham and our real-world experiences here, it's extremely hard to move with a voucher. Extremely hard. And so you also have a federally mandated timeline to move your voucher. And so if you have a unit that is failing inspection and DHA stops paying and your landlord wants you gone instead of fixing the issue, then you have a certain amount of time to transfer your voucher to another unit. And what happens in that situation? People lose their vouchers. They lose their vouchers because they cannot lease up fast enough to meet those requirements. So we don't have to sit here and talk about it like it doesn't happen. We know what's happening with those vouchers in real time. So I don't, I know I'm not going to, I'm not going to sit up here and listen to anything that like disqualifies the real experience that's going on in Durham because people need to really understand what's happening with that. I also want to state that we have housing authorities, first of all, we have one in Charlotte. They're doing fine with this code, that the ordinance exactly is written. We also have housing authorities all across the country in states with much stricter tenant protections. They are all okay. And in fact, they're all doing way better than the Durham Housing Authority is, so just say that for its, for what it is. I mean, we, we have, yeah, we've, we all know the problems. I don't need to wax on about them. And then the final thing I want to say about this is that the housing authority, yes, provides almost all of our affordable housing that is in the city, but they also have buildings and they are subject to our city codes. And we inspect those buildings, and we therefore have the right to levy penalties on those buildings if they do not meet the health and safety standards that we have for this city. So I'm not interested in amending any further. Like I said, I will, I will entertain a 48-hour curing period, but that is the extent of those amendments that I'm willing to entertain.
Thank you. So I, I, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I did want to just say, "Go Pirates." Sorry. I thought it was a...
Are you done? Thank you so much. I, I, for those of you who know me personally, I'm very prideful, and I, I just, I hate it saying, "We're going to be like Charlotte, be like Charlotte." I just, I think we're better than Charlotte. And when we were talking about this in the work session, I wanted us to, I wanted us to really, you know, put some muscle behind this and make sure that it's ironclad. But we're, you know, just speaking with my colleagues and, you know, just understanding the risk and the, you know, just, just what's at stake, I think that we will be okay. I know that, I do want to put something on the record, I just, because we are defiantly Durham, we tend to know what's before us, and then we sometimes still push the envelope. So there, there is a preemption clause that I want to make sure that everyone is aware of, and then I'm going to ask my colleagues to come to a vote. So, Mr. Attorney, we were briefly talking about that preemption clause. I just want to make sure we are clear what that...
Yeah, just, just to summarize, since the, the work session, City Attorney's Office reviewed the memo from the tenants' union and provided a memo to the council. And in that memo continued, did not, did not change its opinion with regard to the authority of the city and specifically made reference to the Landlord-Tenant Act and sustained this opinion that the, the city is preempted, expressly preempted by that act. And that's why the city gave the opinion that, that the statute doesn't authorize the council to enact or enforce this ordinance. So that is the opinion of the City Attorney's Office. It has not changed, and, and that's, that's just a summary of, of what City Attorney's Office has done to this point.
Thank you. So I, I think we all know that it is, it is not for, it's not enforceable. It's not for us. It's for, it's a tool for, for tenants. But it also works two ways. It is really to protect the transaction of a dwelling space between, you know, the tenant and, and the landlord. So, but I also, could you come back up? No, it's fucking brief. I just want you to state those three, three points again briefly.
So the three amendments that we proposed would be in response to the Danzy decision, and that would be to add a notice period, to add a knowledge requirement. But again, just to reiterate, in conversation with council members, this, there seems to be a statutory interpretation that those are already in the municipal code. So the most important one for us would be the 48-hour curing period.
Yeah.
Well, if, if you're looking to me with regard to how to put that in, I'm not going to make a particular recommendation of the precise wording or where that should go, not, certainly not here. I'm not prepared to do that.
That's, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, I just wanted to, but we can do that.
We would have to adopt, ultimately, we'd have to, whether it be by amendment, we'd have to adopt the change if, if the council proceeds with adopting something tonight and we agree, if the City Attorney's Office agrees that it's strengthened with a cure period, we would come back to you with the appropriate amendment in the appropriate place. That would be my recommendation, rather than actually propose that right now.
Okay. Councilmember?
Thank you. I wouldn't mind that. I would also, I mean, when we've done some other things, we've had a period of going back and, and seeing what the, what the outcome was. Like, is it, is it moving anything? Is it doing anything? Does it need to be updated? So if we have to come back and add this cure language, which I think is a good idea, I think it resolves some of the concerns that I certainly have with this ordinance, I would, I would appreciate that. And I appreciate what Councilmember Cook is saying about this list, but I'm looking at the list, and at least the roof part and the other one are in there. So I'm not really quite sure. Again, I would rather have it tied to our code because those are our rules. Like, I don't care what Charlotte's doing, right? That's their code. It's our code. And so I'm happy to keep moving tonight, but at some point, this is going to have to come back, and we're going to have to tweak language so that we can get it right. Thank you.
Okay. Just to make sure I'm on track here, Mr. Attorney, you are suggesting that we, I mean, if we are going to make any adjustments, then we can, we should do that later, but not add that to what we have now?
My recommendation, if we're making changes to the ordinance that's before you today, is that any changes be crystal clear and that the clerk understands what those are. That's, that's my recommendation. I do not have a recommendation, to the extent that a cure period is advisable to add to the ordinance, I don't have a recommendation now to tell you where that should go in the, in the proposed ordinance or somewhere else in the code. It's just something that takes a little bit of time to recommend.
That, so that was, and that recommendation was my, my holdup on this. Councilmember Cook, this is what I was speaking about earlier, just that period, the cure period. For the sake of just facilitating the due diligence, this is, so the recommendation that we're talking about is what my hold, my hangup was, which I think that amendment addresses my concern. So...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So wouldn't a cure period be part of the way that it was administered? And wouldn't that be more on the program side or the actual implementation side of this conversation rather than the ordinance? Similar to like planning, they have a, like, or just regular inspections?
Inspections.
That's on the implementation side? And I'm really, I'm just going to have to...
Yeah, that...
More than anything.
I'd have to defer to staff as to whether or not we've had an opportunity to...
we've had an opportunity to weigh in on a cure period. This is not a conversation that we've had at the administrative level.
Alexis John, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. Alexis John, Housing Code, Housing and Neighborhood Services Assistant Director. We currently do have a curing period within the current ordinance that states that owners have 72 hours to make repairs to the property.
Got it. That works for me. OK. Thank you.
If the 72-hour curing period is on the code, the position of the North Carolina Tenant Union would be that we should adopt it as is.
All right, any other comments?
So there's also, there was a proposal as well for this preemption caveat before the ordinance that I hear Councilmember Cook has suggested she does not accept that. But there may be support in the council for that. So I want to put that out there.
That's what's the, which one was that again? The two?
That's a, I can read if you'd like. And this is language that the City Attorney's Office shared today earlier that I've shared with folks in the council. So it would read, "Unless otherwise preempted by state or federal law." And then the language then continues there.
Quick question.
Go ahead.
Quick question. Isn't that already the way every ordinance is received?
One moment, please.
Well, that's, the wording is not in every ordinance. So it's, this is a proposal to make it expressly stated.
What does that change? Because I think if it was...
That wording, that phrase to say, "Unless otherwise," that's the express statement.
Well, what I'm saying is, if we were preempted, we would just be preempted. The law would not stand, right? That's generally how this works. So when Prip was preempted...
I think there are other reasons to make it express in particular...
You got to say what those reasons are.
I'm sorry. Well, given the opinion that we have given previously as to our authority, our recommendations, if you do want to adopt this, to make it clear that we're saying it's an ordinance that is effective, is applied so long as it is consistent or does not, is not, does not conflict with the authority of, is not otherwise preempted. I'm sorry. And I don't have the wording in front of me.
And I think, I understand what you're trying to put in places to make sure that the City Attorney's Office has offered its objection to it. But what I'm saying is, if it were preempted by the state or federal government, it would automatically kill the ordinance. Am I under some, like, correct me if I'm wrong. That's what I'm saying.
Well, but the, I think that that, I think that that's a...
One second. Folks, do we, I mean, we want to get this through. We really do.
I think that that is a difficult question to answer in the, you know, without concrete examples and scenarios.
I think Prip was one, was the one I gave as an example.
And so part of the issue is, is who is going to be applying this ordinance? And who's going to be relying on the ordinance? That's part of the question here. So that is, I mean, that was a recommendation that we had, if you wanted to proceed with the proposed wording.
I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying in the unsaid. Thank you.
I'm going to go back to my previous statement, which is that we have an ordinance that has been unchallenged in a different municipality for a long period of time. We don't need to add any confusion to this. We are creating a tool for tenants to use. Then let's create a tool for tenants to use. And let's not add any extra language that might cause distraction or cause someone to challenge it or cause someone to think that maybe it does not apply to them. We know that city law is preempted by state law and state law is preempted by federal law. We have a hierarchy. We do this all the time in court. Where laws conflict, we always take the more powerful law. It's a thing that we learned our first year of law school. And it is exciting to do it in real time, I will say, because it's challenging sometimes to find where things are in conflict. But for me, adding in language that's going to make this more vague, potentially accept people from it, potentially add a target to our backs, it's not a friendly amendment. I would say it was the opposite.
All right. You go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm not an attorney, as Councilmember Cook is. We rely on our city attorney. As Mayor Pro Tem said, our job here is to figure out the best way to make this work for Durham. We've received intelligence from the Housing Authority, which is not part of the city of Durham, a separate organization, that this is a challenge. We've gone to the city attorney and asked, "How do we address this challenge, this unique role that the federal law plays with the Durham Housing Authority?" We've asked their advice. This is the advice they've given us. And that's what I'm bringing forward.
All right. Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that, Councilmember Cook, I appreciate what you're doing here. Part of being one of seven is to come to consensus. At least, I'm interested in that. And so this is an ordinance where most of us are in agreement. There is a line being added based on, you know, city attorney advice. I appreciate that you are an attorney, but you are not in the City Attorney's Office and neither are you an expert in municipal law. And so I think that I am interested in adding that. I think it, I think that it is helpful and I appreciate the city attorney's advice. There have been many times that residents have come and advocated for something that we don't have the legal authority to do. And we've had to spend often many years trying to craft a workaround. We often call it the Durham workaround. Tax relief during the pandemic when we provided grants and loans to small businesses. Small businesses wanted us to do grants. That is clearly not allowed. And so we created a fund with Duke and Duke did the grant side and we did the low-interest loan side because that's what we had the authority to do. So this is not any different for me. This is part of being a local leader, a municipal leader in the state of North Carolina. It's frustrating. It's challenging. It makes it hard to do your job. But it is what it is. And so I am interested in adding that. I appreciate what you've said. But again, we often have to pivot or change things that we want as council members to bring everyone along. And I think most of us are there. So...
Please, decorum, please.
That's where I'm at. I think it would be helpful to add that clause. And I understand and appreciate why the City Attorney's Office is suggesting it. Thank you.
So I think, I think what is being missed is this is a specific crafting that is meant to work as a tool. And that would undo the tool. So you're missing, like, this is not like trying to get everybody to consensus where you just change a couple of words and it still works the same way. That addition would give people a hangup to skip the reason we're putting the tool in place. So the sentences themselves become additional words to challenge. Don't add any additional words. Leave it the way that it is. And I'm not, I'm trying, I'm trying to be really, like, serious in saying, like, this is not, this is not like, you know, trying to get to PB or whatever. This is, this is specific to... If we were trying to put in place an immigrant defense, we would want the language to be as tight as possible so that you couldn't work around it. You don't make it looser. You don't give anyone a way out.
And I would posit that if preempted by the state of North Carolina, we wouldn't have that authority. And so that's what's at stake here.
And that's why I'm saying, if it was preempted...
It has been preempted. That's the whole point we're having an argument.
We wouldn't have that authority if it was.
All right. Thank you. Yeah. All right. Actually, my bad.
I yield, I yield, I yield.
Yeah, Councilmember, wrist.
I just want to ask a quick question of the city attorney. So would this clause violate the ordinance we're discussing, in your opinion?
Would it violate what...
Would it undo the ordinance that we're considering?
No.
In your opinion?
I don't know.
I, colleagues, I appreciate this discussion, debate, whatever you want to call it, very much. I guess the controlling question for me is, will it do violence to the toolship, the efficacy of the toolship? Because, again, Charlotte has not enforced this. So to make, to make an icon of Charlotte's ordinance that has not been enforced, I mean, they're as much as in experimental territory as we are. And I think our, with all due respect, I think our attorneys are smarter than Charlotte's attorneys. And they came and headhunted one from us. So I hope I don't get into an intermunicipal fight. I, again, I'm supportive of providing this tool for tenants. But I also know that sometimes, in heated discussions, sometimes we get into a rut where we defend for the sake of defense, where we're so vested in something that belongs to all of us. There's 300,000 people in the city. There are multiple perspectives. And there's nothing wrong with this council, seven people that represent any one of us. There's probably thousands of people in the city that agree with our position just by virtue of us being up here. And I don't think we should easily dismiss that. So I don't want to be dismissive of any of my colleagues because thousands of people put them here, of our neighbors and friends and residents. So I don't want to disrespect the process of deliberation or be lulled into thinking that my position is the only position and the only right one. We have to be very cautious of that. That's where democracy starts to break down. With that said, my only question, and I put this to anyone, is, does the language do violence to providing a tool? And if so, how does it? And if we're comparing it to a city that's never enforced it in the first place, how do we know that? But again, I'm prepared to support it as is. But I don't want to be dismissive of my colleagues raising questions pursuant to their sworn duty to do this. I think that would be a disservice to our public square to do that. But I am prepared to support it as is. But that question does stand. Would it do violence to the effect of it? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if folks are ready, I'm OK with introducing a motion.
All right. I have a few amendments that none seem to cause any violence or harm or damage. I just need to remember the order. So, I'm sorry, what?
We haven't agreed on any amendments. And in fact, they said that because there was the 72-hour period in the code...
Because it already is, that's right.
Yes. And I wanted to say to the Mayor Pro Tem's point, that's the exact crux of the issue. It will, in fact, impede the tool. It wouldn't make any difference for the city. We only...
I'm sorry, you said it would, it would what?
It would, it would affect that as a tool for tenants. And I'm, there's people here who, I literally practice in eviction court all day, every day. So I do find that I'm an expert in this field. There are other folks here who... Thank you. I'm not like, this isn't like a thing. I'm just speaking from personal knowledge. But there's also other experts here who can speak to this as well. But it would impact its ability as a tool. It doesn't make a difference for us because we can't enforce something that's preempted. So it doesn't really impact us either way. But what it does do is it weakens, it takes the teeth out. It weakens the tool for tenants. And so that is the crux of the issue. And that is why I'm so opposed to this. It's not because I don't want to reach a consensus up here, but if it means leaving behind some tenants, I'm not willing to sacrifice them.
No, I really, I really... Listen, as I have, I'm giving great deference to you in this conversation. And I appreciate, and my question was genuine. It was a genuine inquiry to see whether or not it would, and I appreciate...
Yeah, thank you.
I do appreciate, no, I appreciate the spirit of the response and I respect the work you do and the expertise you do. And the question was a real question in seeking to come as close as we can to shared ownership of this ordinance because it will become the property of the people of Durham, all of us. And we speak for all of those people. So thank you.
Thank you. Speaking of question, I'm going to call it. I'll entertain a motion to add a new subcategory F in the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 6, Section 10-241, violation penalty fees as proposed.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, colleagues. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. That's one more. Oh, I'm sorry, it was me. I'm sorry about that. All right, please close the vote. All right.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, regarding this ordinance, I need to make sure that we clearly state, because it wasn't in the motion, that the effective date would be the date that we passed, which would be October 20th, 2025. All right, thank you, colleagues. Yep, item number 22. Colleagues, colleagues, we'll recess for just five minutes. Five minutes. Five minutes.
I'm Austin. Nice to meet you. I wanted you to know my face, so if you.
Maybe it's not on? Let's try it again. There we go. Awesome. Good evening, my name is Jalisa Harris. I am a staff planner in the Land Development Review Work Group in the Planning and Development Department. Staff request that all Planning and Development Department testimony and materials presented be made part of the permanent record. This street closing request, SC 250001, was continued from the August 4th City Council meeting to allow further discussion with the applicant about the provision of a greenway easement for the proposed Rockwood Trail. This request is for the permanent closure of a 402 linear foot portion of Cliff Street between Blunt Street and Rosedale Avenue. A revised plat has been submitted by the applicant, which provides two greenway easements, one parallel to Cliff Street and one running perpendicular to Cliff Street and connecting to Sycamore Street. The portion of Cliff Street, as shown in Attachment A, the context map, proposed foreclosure has not been opened and does not contain any public improvements or uses. If closed, the 19,965 square feet, 0.46 acre of right-of-way will be recombined with the adjacent parcel, identified with a real estate ID 107722 and the address 1700 Cliff Street. The recombination will create a 1.5 acre parcel, as shown on the associated street closing and recombination plat, Attachment D. The new parcel is intended to be reserved for development in the future, for which plans have not yet been submitted by the property owners. The parcels adjacent to the Cliff Street portion are also owned by the parties requesting the closure. If the proposed partial street closure is approved by council pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 160D-501 and 160D-605, the parcel identified with the real estate ID 107722, as recombined with the former dedicated right-of-way, should be designated established residential on the place type map of the comprehensive plan.
Thank you so much. I'm going to declare this public hearing open, but before we go to the applicant in the gallery, I'm going to yield for any questions from my honorable colleagues. Councilmember Cook.
Thank you. So I was really pleased to read the easements, but I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit about it, because last time I thought we talked about the easements weren't, we were not able to do them in this type of street closing. Can you just explain, like, how we now have these two easements?
Sure. And I'll allow Sarah Young to speak to the easements.
I guess the question is, like, whether it was just a revision and how that happened?
This is Jessica Dockery of the Planning and Development Department. So the easements are not actually in the right-of-way. They are at the north side of that parcel that is going to be recombined with the right-of-way that's to be closed. And Rosedale runs north-south to the east of that on the private property. That's where the easement will be located.
Sorry, the second one is on the private property and the first one you said?
They're both on private property versus in the right-of-way. So that's because right-of-way should only be for streets, and there's, we didn't have a mechanism for that. The applicant has been willing to give an easement across their private property.
Okay, so it's not actually technically the property at issue in the street closing where the easement is going to?
There's one that will be in that parcel, but not in the right-of-way. So when they combine, it won't be all in the same parcel, but at the north side versus the right, the south side, which is where the right-of-way is.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, but I thought that we, I thought that we were talking about this last time, and we were told that easements couldn't be part of the street closure. And so that was the, that I thought was the issue.
You mean as the same process?
Yeah.
We have talked to the attorneys and.
We feel good about it. Okay, awesome. It just has changed. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anything.
And it has only happened one more time than I'm aware of. So it is a very unusual situation, but it worked out this time.
Great, thank you. Those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Baker?
Yeah, just following up on that. So this is to vacate a portion of Cliff Street. The legal mechanism is, did they also submit, like, a parallel application for a plat? Is that what we're talking about here?
So the street closing plat also shows recombination because the right-of-way becomes part of another parcel or multiple parcels. And in this case, the only difference from that is that we're also adding easements to it.
Cool, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, anyone else? All right, this public hearing is open. I'm going to invite the applicant to please approach. Good evening, sir. How much time do you anticipate needing?
Only a very few minutes, I expect, at this point.
Let's put 12 minutes on the clock, please.
But my wife, Jan, and I are going empty, have gone empty nests. And we are, of course, looking to downsize, that comes with it. We have lived in the neighborhood since, we moved in in 1992, so have lived there nearly 35 years now. We want to stay in the neighborhood. We want to be in a position to age in place. And to do that, we propose to build a smaller house on the, than we're currently in, on the 1700 Cliff Street lot. The closing that we're asking for is part of our plan to build that house. Now, as Ms. Harris mentioned in her summary, at the August 4th City Council meeting, the concern that was raised was access to the Rockwood Trail, which runs, which we has proposed to run west of our property. And the concern, of course, was that closing Cliff Street would block east-west access from Rosedale Avenue to the proposed Rockwood Trail. At the August 4th session, council basically told us to work with planning to see if we could develop a win-win solution. I believe the exact words "win-win" were used by, were used by a member of the council at that session. So we have worked, we have done that. We have worked with, we have worked with planning, and we have worked with Parks and Rec. And we have come up with this proposal, which you see in the plat in front of you. We are proposing a greenway easement that runs across the north side of the 1700 Cliff Street property. And at the request of Parks and Rec, we have also given an easement on the other property that we own, 1700 Cliff, 1700 Sycamore Street, running roughly northwest, southeast across that property. And Parks and Rec asked for that, and we have agreed to give it to them. So I believe that at this point, we have found the win-win solution that we were looking for after the August 14, August 4th meeting. And I thank you for your consideration. And I am certainly here to answer any questions or concerns that you have.
Thank you so much for being with us, sir. We do have a speaker, sign of Chris Pearlstein. Thank you for being with us. You'll have three minutes.
I'm back. I thought about the bowtie more, and I do still like it, NC State colors.
I appreciate that, man, thank you.
So the applicant actually reached out to me, and we chatted about their plans, which, you know, aren't expressed in the plot, you know, and the application for closing Cliff Street. And after talking to them, you know, they expressed that their desire wasn't to isolate the properties or prevent future development potential in an area that is bus-accessible, which is a big concern of mine. I believe the proffer of the greenway easement would solve pedestrian bicycle access, assuming the city completes the short greenway segment as well as the remainder of Cliff and Blount Paper Streets. So we really need the city to kind of focus on coming up with some good policies and finishing this network to avoid these situations. The city could also avoid, I referenced that the draft UDO would forbid new dead-end streets, and my concern that we would be potentially creating those with this closure. The city could also avoid those by completing the Rosedale and Moreland Paper Streets. So there's some options here, but it requires the city to establish, you know, those policies to do this. On top of the safety improvements of reducing vehicle miles traveled per our Vision Zero Action Plan, there's an affordability component that's really important to me as transportation makes up the second biggest chunk of household expenses after the first one that we've talked a lot about, which is rent. Affordability is about more than just your rent and mortgage. It's also about lifestyle choices that housing and infrastructure do or don't provide to you. And I'd like to offer a quick solution, if I have enough time, of filling out, about filling out our paper street network in the form of something from our past that is distinctly Durham. In the Triangle and even the state at large, we're unique in the quantity and character of our alleyways. And there's something that I really enjoy walking and biking on. They're narrow streets that facilitate everything from commercial opportunities that you see downtown to diverse housing options like ADUs. They provide safe, calm options for pedestrians and cyclists. They do this while taking up less width and complexity compared to a modern street and at a much lower cost. Unfortunately, our UDO, both presently and in the new draft, doesn't allow for this distinctly Durham feature to be leveraged and would be a great way for us to fill out our network in a cost-effective manner. Taking my neighbor at his word that he doesn't desire to reduce those transportation and housing options and with the proffer of the greenway, the greenway easements, I don't oppose this closure now. But the ball is in the city's court to make sure that we continue to build an environment that aligns with our values, whether that's safe streets or affordable living circumstances. These issues are all connected, and I think that, you know, if this moves forward, which I think you should support at this point, we need to facilitate these options through filling out our paper street network. And I think that this is a model, perhaps, how we should do these street closures moving forward. We should be getting something for giving up city land. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's the only registered speaker I had. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else in the chamber who wishes to speak on this item? Anyone else? With that being said, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. The matter is back before the council. Colleagues, questions, comments? Councilmember Cook?
I just want to say briefly that I really appreciate your work on this, and I'm really grateful that y'all have been able to come to something that works well for us. And I'm excited to, like our speaker has said, make sure that we actually use, utilize that and get some connectivity going on in that area. So I just want to appreciate the work that y'all did and staff, so that we have a great project in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Baker?
Yeah, I was one of the folks that was not happy when this originally came to us, and now I am. I think we've reached the win-win. I don't think that it would have made the city better to close a right-of-way that leads to a potential future greenway. And now we have, we are, we are closing, potentially voting to. And now we have, we are, we are closing, potentially voting to, to, to close the right-of-way. But we are adding not one, but two connections. And I think that that is a key, is that it's, it's adding two connections and not just one. So it really is a win-win and it is making the connectivity better in that area. So I'm happy with, with where we've landed on this one.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. Just a quick question for Chris. I just wanted to get the second, I got Rosedale, but there was another paper street that you mentioned in your neighborhood. I was trying to keep up.
Yeah, so, sorry, I've got to read through my notes here. So it's Rosedale and Moreland, which are to the, to the east of the property. They're north-south streets. I believe, I might get these confused. Rosedale, I think, actually has like essentially a mulched area that the neighborhood, am I getting that right? Rosedale is the one that's, there's Yeah, so it's, neighbors have, I think, cleared it out and it's, it's used to walk through there. But I do think we'd be better off if like the city could figure out how to do a paved greenway or even gravel or something like that. Make it easier for folks to navigate that a little bit more formalized. So it was Rosedale and Moreland.
Thank you. I really appreciate you spending the time volunteering to bring that type of information forward. It's important from the neighborhood level to hear folks speaking up on their greenways. And especially when you have alleys in your community, that's helpful. And then I do want to also appreciate the applicant being willing to hear the council's concerns and really try to figure out how to make sure that there was access. Thank you very much to you and your wife.
Thank you. Councilmember Cabio, did you have anything on this?
Councilmember.
Councilmember Riss.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yeah, similarly, I just want to thank Mr. Hamilton and Ms. Jackson. We asked you in August to go back and to work on this and address a connectivity issue and that's exactly what you did. You've done the work. To me, this is all about abundance, right? It's like more housing. It's more connectivity. We asked for one and you gave us two, so that's like wonderful. So I want to really appreciate you for that. I also want to appreciate Mr. Pearlstein on behalf of B-PAC for just, for being such a, like a thoughtful and steady presence on all issues related to connectivity. It means a lot. This is great stuff. I think, as you said, Mr. Pearlstein, now it's on us, right? We've got to, we've got to provide the funding. And as we talked about at the break, you all suggested this, I think, probably back in the 90s, right? So we just got to find the money at the city here to make that happen and it's on us. So thank you so much. I'm happy to support this.
Thank you. Thank you for working with staff. I wish you well in your next chapter. Mr. Mayor, did you have anything on this before we?
I'm all good.
All right then. Colleagues, this item requires two motions. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Did I, I closed it here? Did I close it here? I did, okay. Requires two motions. First motion, I'll entertain a motion to permanently close a 402 linear foot portion of Cliff Street between Blount Street and Rosedale Avenue. I hear a motion in the second. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Please close the vote and report out.
Motion passes seven zero.
I'll entertain a motion to amend the placetype map of the comprehensive plan to designate parcel identified with REED 107722, 1700 Cliff Street, as recombined with the former dedicated right-of-way as established residential.
So moved.
I hear a motion in the second. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Please close the vote and report out.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Item 22 is discharged. Mr. Mayor, do you want to reassume?
You know what? I think you're doing a great job, Mayor Protem.
I figured you would. Item number 23, consolidated zoning map change.
I'm tired from the earlier discussion.
Ravenstone commercial. We'll hear from our staff.
Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton and honorable council members. Good late evening. I am Peyton Burgess with the Planning and Development Department and I am happy to be here with you tonight. Before I begin, staff would like to state for the record that all Planning Department hearing items have been advertised and noticed in accordance with state and local law and affidavits of all notices are on file in the Planning Department. A request for a zoning map change has been received from Jeremy Anderson of Thomas and Hutton for one parcel of land totaling 2.42 acres and located at 5204 Wake Forest Highway. The current zoning is commercial center with a graphic development plan. The applicant proposes to change this designation to commercial general with a textual development plan. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property to allow most uses within the commercial general district. The properties are currently designated suburban commercial on the placetype map. The proposed commercial general zoning is generally consistent with the designated placetype. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you so much for the report. I'm going to declare this public hearing open before we go to the gallery. And the applicant, I'm going to yield to my honorable colleagues for any questions or comments they may have on this matter. All right, seeing none, I'm going to invite the applicant to come up. Good evening. Thank you for being with us. How much time do you anticipate needing, sir?
Just a couple of minutes.
Couple, put seven minutes on the clock, please.
Yeah, good late evening, Mayor Williams, Protem Middleton and council members. Jeremy Anderson, Thomas and Hutton, 2510 Meridian Parkway here in Durham. I'll keep this brief. I was going to anyways, but given the time of the evening. Pretty straightforward. We are looking to rezone a commercial property that's landlocked within the Ravenstone Commercial Shopping Center. That shopping center was zoned with a development plan back in 2006. And it's, this parcel is designated as retail only. It has sat vacant for about 20 years, 19, 20 years. So the developer, the owner is looking just to open that up to general development by changing it from CC with that retail only just to commercial general. We did exclude a list of uses just based on, you know, that would make the neighborhood a little more comfortable. We did have two neighboring meetings. There wasn't much pushback on any of that, but that's it. It's, we think it's sat vacant because it really has limited visibility. It's kind of behind the shopping center. So it's not really ideal for retail, so commercial general to open up the development possibilities for and hopefully, you know, develop that infill parcel. So with that, I'll, I'll be here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any speakers sign up for this item. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the gallery who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing that, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed and back before the council colleagues. Questions, comments? Councilmember Cook?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Anderson. The first is, did you follow up with the HOA about the storm drain?
Not, well, we did not follow up directly with them. I do have an answer. I was wondering if they would be here to follow up with that question. The question of our call was, you know, we were, were we using their storm drainage to handle our storm water? And the answer is, right now, the drainage goes off that parcel and goes into a stormwater pond that is, I think, for the neighborhood and for the shopping center. So all the drainage right now goes, there's no way around it. It goes to this pond that was developed as part of the neighborhood, the shopping center. With future development, we've kind of analyzed it from an engineering perspective. And either we would connect to a stormwater pipe leaving the shopping center or we would discharge off the low end of our property, the, sorry, the property like a traditional development would, just discharge the property line back to pre-development conditions. So the water is going to make it to that pond, but we are, we would develop the stormwater onsite independently and not use that stormwater pond for this development, stormwater treatment. So I think they were concerned we were using that pond, you know, for our use and we're not. It's just downstream and we'll treat stormwater on this parcel independently.
Is that different than what the food line does?
The food line, I believe, drains to that pond.
And, sorry, and you said that y'all were either going to connect a stormwater pipe?
Well, that's where all the water goes regardless of whether it's connected to a pipe or just drains across the surface land. It all goes to that pond.
Okay. I mean, I think the question was whether y'all would pay for the use of that since they built it or keep it up?
Right. We wouldn't, see, we would develop, we would contain stormwater on property back to pre-development conditions. So we wouldn't be using any use of it. It's really just a downstream stormwater device, like a, like a stream or a natural pond would be. It just happens to be a constructed stormwater pond. There's no way to avoid this water not running into that pond.
Okay. Would you mind having a conversation with them again, just for, for, okay, posterity? And then the second thing is you talked about how unlikely and unappealing it would be to have residential on this space. Are y'all willing to commit to not doing residential since it's so unlikely?
I don't think so. We've just, because we're not sure what the development options would be. I say it's unlikely just from experienced land planning, you know, accessing a residential development of 20, 25 units behind the shopping center, literally kind of off the service. Or most likely, this development would share the driveway with the goodwill. That's where the access easement is. So it's, it's unlikely, but we are not willing to strike residential as a possible use.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, anyone else? All right, this item requires two motions. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the unified development ordinance by taking property out of commercial center with a development plan, Falls Jordan Watershed Protection Overlay District B, and establishing the same as commercial general with a development plan, Falls Jordan Watershed Protection Overlay District B.
So moved.
Second.
I've heard a motion in the second. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Please close the vote and report out.
Motion passes seven zero.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consistency statement as required by NCGS Section 160D-605. So moved. I hear a motion in the second. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Waiting for one more. Please close the vote and report out.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Madam 23 is discharged. I'll yield to the mayor.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I just was curious if we could maybe do the item 25 ahead of item 24? Because it might be more straightforward. So just was curious if you were willing to do that.
Without objection. Colleagues, we will move to item number 25.
Maybe that's not what folks wanted. Sorry for any of the applicants. Apologies. Okay.
I'm sorry. Would you yield for a minute, please? I'm sorry, on, on the previous, the vote we just took on number, item number 23, Councilmember Riss has indicated that in the memo, it says there would be three motions for this. And there's two appearing on the cover. I just want to make sure we've done our due diligence for this item.
Yeah, so there's a utility extension agreement involved with this case, so that should have been in motion as well.
All right. It wasn't on the sheet that I normally, I'm going to entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the unified development ordinance by taking property out of commercial center with a development plan, Falls Jordan Watershed Protection Overlay District B, and establishing the same as commercial general with a development plan, Falls Jordan Watershed Protection Overlay Dist- No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're right. Okay, I'm reading the wrong one. I'm going to entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a utility extension agreement with Anderson Marlowe. So moved.
Second.
I hear a motion in the second. Would you please open the vote, Madam Clerk? Please close the vote and report out.
Motion passes seven zero.
My thanks to Councilmember Riss for the assistance. Now, item 23 is discharged. We'll move on. Thank you. I yield to the mayor.
Thank you. The next case, consolidated annexation, Wake Olive. Ready for the staff report?
Are we doing 1607?
Consolidated zoning map change, 1607 East Cornwallis Road, which is the result of the applicant providing the residents breakfast because I skipped number 24.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton and honorable council members. Good evening. I'm Andy Lester with the Planning and Development Department. It's good to be with y'all. A request for a zoning map change has been received from Neil Gosh of Morningstar Law Group for nine parcels of land totaling 1.91 acres and located between 1601 and 1625 East Cornwallis Road. The current zoning is commercial neighborhood with a graphic development plan that allows up to 12,800 square feet, a banking facility, sundry store, laundromat, dry cleaning pickup station, real estate rental office, barber shop, beauty shop and/or gift shop. The applicant proposes to change this designation to commercial neighborhood with a textual development plan. The applicant is proposing to rezone the properties to allow for any use within the district except for educational facilities, medical facilities, indoor recreation, outdoor recreation, drive-through facilities, convenience store with gasoline sales, payday lenders and vehicle sales, vehicle service. The properties are currently designated neighborhood service in the placetype map. The proposed CND zoning is generally consistent with the designated placetype. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. Colleagues, you've heard the staff report. Are there any questions? Technical questions? All right, at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open. And I'll hear from the applicant. How much time do you think you need?
Maybe five minutes.
All right, please put seven minutes on the clock.
And good evening, Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton and members of the City Council.
Good evening. Happy New Year.
An attorney with the Morningstar Law Group at 700 West Main here in Durham. I'm representing the applicant on this and thank you, Mr. Lester, for your presentation. Yeah, let me start by saying tonight is Diwali, where my family celebrates the triumph of good over evil, of light over darkness, of knowledge over ignorance, primarily by cleaning our homes, spending time with family, eating good food and welcoming light and blessings into our home. I know by now I have missed the festivities at home. I'm sure my wife lit some dias with the kids. But anyway, I want to wish each of you and the city of Durham a happy Diwali. And I encourage you all to invite the light into your home and into your hearts. Okay, about this rezoning, during my career, I've come across a few parcels where the zoning was so restrictive that it really only allowed for one or maybe a handful of uses. And that's, this is one of those cases. Under the current zoning, the property can be used only for a handful of uses, as you've heard from staff. So banking, a sundry store, laundromat, dry cleaning, real estate office, barber shop, beauty shop or gift shop. And that's it. A lot of those uses sound just fine, but the property's been zoned that way since 1981. The property's also been vacant since then or probably vacant since before then. And so that's, you know, over four decades, it appears the market has spoken. Probably none of those uses are going to happen on that parcel. And so really, we're proposing to rezone the property basically to add more uses to the list of possibilities. Really, instead of adding more allowed uses, we are switching the condition to a list of prohibited uses, which will leave more uses available on the property. The base zoning district will remain the same and that's a commercial neighborhood. We've prohibited school, medical facilities, indoor and outdoor recreation, drive-through facilities, gas station, payday lenders or vehicle service. And so that leaves a range of uses, including residential, community service, daycare, place of worship, restaurant, but no drive-through, small-scale retail and services or office. We also have added some commitments that are not exactly use-related. We have limited non-residential square footage to 12,000 square feet. We'll be using native plantings. We've limited the impervious area to no more than 70% of the property, which in this location, there is no impervious limitation. So that's an additional limitation there. We also are making contribution to Durham Public Schools and that's regardless of whether it's built out for residential. It's just something that the developer is going to do. And we added a commitment related to access because this was important for the city and NC DOT. Basically, we've added a commitment that there will be southbound left turn lanes on Cornwallis at the entrances to however this property would be developed. And so there's really not much to it. It's a case where the old zoning has proven to not be very useful. It's relatively small and hemmed in piece of property with a lot of road frontage, but actually not a lot of depth. You know, from a technical standpoint, it's not the best piece of property from a development standpoint. But the zoning obviously has been the biggest challenge here in the last few decades. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. We hope to have your support tonight as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now I owe some folks breakfast as well.
Yep. Yep, yep, yep. Colleagues, are there any questions? Well, let me, I don't have any public speakers, so therefore I'll declare the, one moment. 24, it's 25, okay. All right, I don't have any public speakers. Any speakers signed up? So therefore, I would declare the public hearing closed back before the council. Colleagues, any comments? Yes. Councilmember Cook?
I just wanted to see if staff had any more context on the, the way that this zoning was set in 1981. If not, I understand, but I just wanted to ask.
Thank you for the question. I think during Thank you for the question. I think during the eighties and early nineties, there's more of a site-specific type development plan, which sort of constrained or set the specific use at a specific location. So over the years, we've tended to go away from that to allow for flexibility. With those certain conditions, you're locked in unless you go back through the rezoning process.
And are there other sites similarly?
Oh, yeah.
Could be, because I think it would be a healthy conversation or piece to bring forward a number of those to try and kind of lump them together so they don't have to come forward as individual cases. I mean, from that long ago, if they're still vacant?
Sure. One of the things that we are thinking about with the new UDO is pretty much eliminating old development plans that have been inactive for X amount of years. That year, we don't know yet, is it still being vetted? But that idea is being worked on in the new UDO.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Yeah.
Just a couple of questions for you, Mr. Gosh. Okay, so these are all kind of tied together, but I'm looking at this plot of land, and it's backing up to townhouses. Across the street, there's some residential as well. I know that this was really, really restrictive zoning before, and now it's sort of like opened up, but it's opened up quite broadly. So I was curious if there was any interest in having a minimum of non-residential commitment, or maybe like what your thoughts were on having commercial space here so that it would be some accessibility to the folks who are living nearby.
All right, yeah, so to be clear, it backs up to apartments. I think they might look like townhomes, but they are apartments.
Okay, sorry, I think it says apartments on my townhouse neighborhood on my placetime map, so sorry, my bad.
Oh, okay, I'm just, yeah, just, that's what it backs up to. There's residential across the street. There's also some non-residential across the street. But in the couple neighborhood meetings that we had, I would, I'll just say there's primarily two things that neighbors expressed an interest in seeing being built at this location. They were daycare and residential. So I think the way the property is set up, it is more than likely that it's going to be ultimately built for residential, just because there isn't a whole lot of depth on the, on these parcels. There's really just not a lot of room for parking in a building. So it seems more than likely that this ultimately will turn into residential development. As far as the zoning opening up, I mean, the number of uses, the use list that was, that's currently on the zoning is really specific, but it is ultimately like retail or services. That's what it entails. So those uses would still be allowed. Beyond that, the new zoning really only adds the office component and the residential. It does allow, obviously, a lot of other retail uses, but those uses arguably should have been allowed in the first place, which is not because of the way the zoning condition was written. But I don't, I don't know that there's, there's no plan on how this is going to redevelop, so I think it would be, I'm not going to be able to make a commitment to a minimum amount of non-residential. But also, I wanted to put on the record, I'm not sure that there'll be any non-residential built on this parcel. That's, that's a possibility as well.
You don't think there'll be any non-resi-- okay.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely.
Just because of the space and the layout?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Councilmember Riss?
Thank you, Mr. Gosh. I just had a question about the unfulfilled transportation request that transportation made. So I think they requested a proffer around, subject to determination by Go Durham on the need for transit-related improvements to construct a bus pullout and a bus shelter, so.
Yeah.
And I understand, like, so as you described, I think there, I'm sure there's site constraints, but I just want to hear you talk about that and whether that's something that's--
This site is very well-served by transit. There are actually stops on both sides of Cornwallis from this, at this location, at both the north end and south end of this property. There's active, I think it's the eight and the twelve. I might be wrong on that. But there are bus stops, active bus stops, on either side of this assembly. The request that we got from transportation was about increasing the, let's say, level of amenity for the bus transit, which I think is a great thing to do.
You mean like the level of service there?
Well, essentially adding a bus pullout.
Right.
The site is a hundred and fifty feet deep. A bus pullout makes the property not buildable for, I mean, that, that is the site. Hundred and fifty feet, that is a bus pullout. So basically, if we made that commitment, we'd be committing to building a bus pullout, and that's it. So it doesn't really have any financial viability for, for the owner if they committed to doing a bus pullout.
So what's the, what's the frontage, how wide?
The frontage is, it's, it's pretty long. It's got a frontage. I'm not sure what the, what the exact frontage is, but the depth, it's a hundred and fifty feet. That's the problem, right? So a bus pullout would really just take away the developability of the parcel. And again, this, one of the best things about this site is its access to transit. Could it be better? I'm not suggesting it couldn't. If there's a bus pullout, that might make it a little easier, a little bit, a little bit better. But this applicant really can't do that, because that would essentially take up all of the developable area.
Thank you.
Just to follow up, has the developer been in contact with Go Triangle?
I'm sorry, can you say it?
Has the developer been in contact with Go Triangle? Because I mean, essentially, if it needed to be, if that was a great area for a bus pullout, it would--
I honestly am having trouble hearing you right there, but you asked if we've been in contact with Go Triangle, but then I didn't hear the rest of it.
Because of the location, knowing that if it, if it's hard, if it's a hard site to build, and it's still vacant, and you're going through all this trouble. If there's a, if there's a medium win-win in there for there to be additional transportation, for there to be a bus, that area is, I mean, the bus stops are not going to be very safe.
Right, the bus stops are essentially signs on the street. Yeah, that's essentially what they are in this location.
But if there's an opportunity to make one, you know, a stop, essentially like a little hub in that area, is there any conversation around that? Or, I mean, I'm forecasting.
So we did talk to Go Triangle, and they're non-committal on it. That's essentially what they said. At time of site plan, they could determine whether they wanted a transit stop in this location. If they took a transit stop in this location, it would, it would not be an additional transit stop. It would be to consolidate or get rid of the existing transit stops, right? So they really, where that leaves the, the property owner is, they could make this commitment, and at time of site plan, they would be required essentially to give the property to Go Durham if they wanted it for a transit stop, and then they wouldn't have anything really left to build. If Go Durham wanted the land, they could take it for that purpose, but they were non-committal on whether they wanted to take it.
And hear me when I say this, and I should probably be talking to our Go Durham representative or Go Triangle representative and saying, like, if there's an opportunity to do a bus pullout tunnel, tunnel over with housing, it's an opportunity to do both housing and transportation, but if we're not having a conversation while this developer is looking, while you're here, you, it's a missed opportunity, because that area is missing. It's, it's, I mean, does bus stops suck?
They, yeah, they do.
Okay. So if there's an opportunity to, I don't know if those conversations are occurring with Go Triangle now and, and around, you know, creating some affordable housing at a bus stop, but it could be the opportunity to do some city, Go Triangle, all of the above.
Yeah, Go Triangle is open to some new ideas. I, I'm scarred from the Southport Mall, where it's like, okay, we're going to put a Go Durham bus stop here and a Go Triangle bus stop there, literally across the street from one another, and they were half million dollars each. It's absolutely crazy, so we're looking at new directions.
So I would encourage some conversations with, I mean, this site is specific, and because it's been undeveloped, there's an opportunity here to go a little bit more densely, I dare to say, with the option to have an, a bus pullout or a bus stop that's actually, even if it took up the hundred and fifty feet, you could always, I don't, I mean, I'm from Jersey, I'm sorry. They have housing that goes up, and your bus goes underneath it. So it's almost like the hotels, where you're kind of having that, that over, anyway, it's a whole lot more.
Oh, you're talking about a completely different facility.
I'm talking about an actual project. But that's more than what we're here for tonight, but it's almost eleven o'clock, and my mind's going a million miles a minute, so I had to say it, because it was on my mind.
No, I appreciate what you're saying.
I love the abundance version of Councilmember Freeman. You're right on target now, now we're talking. I love it. Keep going.
If we're talking better transportation, there's a benefit to the people of the city.
Exactly, exactly.
It's not just abundance, it's a benefit.
Oh, you're speaking abundance now. I love it.
I, I also feel like Erling has taken the podium for some reason, but I don't know.
All right, colleagues, any other? All right. Well, I don't have any speakers signed up for this, so at this time, I'll declare the public, I'll declare the public hearing closed and back before the council.
I think you did that already. Yeah, we're, we're ready for the motion.
We're already, we're already there, sorry. I had a relapse. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a utility extension agreement with, agreement with sixteen oh seven East Cornwallis LLC.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll also entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the unified development ordinance by taking property out of commercial neighborhood with a development plan and establishing the same as commercial neighborhood with a development plan.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. And lastly, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consistency statement as required by North Carolina General Statute, Section 160D-605.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. All right. Enjoy your family time. Just want the record to reflect that the applicant and the residents are having a great time tonight. All right, and our last item on the agenda is consolidated annexation Wake Olive. We're ready for the staff report.
Thank you. A request for utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, and initial zoning map change has been received from Toby Coleman of Smith and Anderson for two parcels of land totaling twelve point sixteen acres and located at fifty-two forty-seven and fifty-two fifty-five Wake Forest Highway. The annexation petition is not contiguous to the primary corporate limits, but is an expansion of an existing satellite. The current zoning is residential suburban twenty and residential rural. The applicant proposes to change this designation to planned development residential seventeen point two seven zero to allow up to two hundred and ten dwelling units with up to ten thousand square feet of non-residential uses. The properties are currently designated mixed-use neighborhood on the placetime map. The proposed PDR seventeen point two seven zero zoning is generally consistent with the designated use shown on the placetime map. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions, technical questions? Councilmember Cook?
Thank you. Could you just, you said it expands an existing satellite?
Correct.
Okay.
It's the secu to the southwest.
Sorry, say that again.
It's the secu that's to the southwest of the site across Wake Forest. That's how it connects.
Okay, thank you. I have some questions about sidewalk maintenance, which I, hopefully you all have talked about. I'm getting a nod from the back of the room. Okay, can you work through those jurisdictional issues with me and help me understand why we were having issues with that frontage space? No one, no one run to the microphone.
Erling Thomas Transportation--
You're free to pour that mic down some.
Erling Thomas Transportation Review Group of the Planning and Development Department. So sidewalk, the city of Durham can only maintain sidewalks that are within its jurisdiction, within its city limits. Anything outside of the city limits would be privately maintained by property owner if it's onsite or even sometimes within the right-of-way. NCDOT does not maintain sidewalks, and neither does the county currently.
And there's no exceptions to this and no workarounds? It is like forbidden that the city do it, or we just don't do it?
I don't believe the city has the legal authority to maintain things outside of its jurisdiction. Additionally, you know, the city is using revenues, city revenues to do the maintenance of things within the corporate limits.
Can I weigh in? So, and I might ask Director Young to the microphone. So we spent a fair amount of time at staff on this issue, and I don't believe maintenance of the sidewalk ended up being the barrier that, that kept that conversation from moving forward. I believe it is the topography of the potential connection and that this had to be, for a sidewalk connection to, to be connected to Neil Middle School, it had to be moved far back from the right-of-way onto private property, and that made it a private property issue and a land acquisition issue. Am I summarizing that correctly? I know you had a much more detailed walkthrough of it, but I don't, I don't believe if the only concern were maintenance, I believe we could probably find a workaround for that.
Okay.
I believe it was the location of the sidewalk that kept that from being a viable option. Sarah, could you address that?
Sure, Mr. Manager. Yes, that is correct. There's a lot of what I would call practical constructibility issues with this location. The right-of-way to, to place the sidewalk in the right-of-way would entail moving all of the overhead power lines that run there. It would entail moving the Neil Middle School sign that is also, would be in line with that sidewalk. In addition, one of the structures in one of those intervening parcels is very, very close to the right-of-way line, and so there's not a whole lot of room there. In addition, there is a swale, so stormwater would have to be, stormwater, right now, it's just a ditch swale along that frontage, so stormwater would have to be dealt with. So I think from a matter of constructibility and the cost of doing all those things, it is not very realistic. Does that help? So I, I agree with the manager's assessment that the maintenance is the least of the issues. We could work that out.
Okay, and, and I'm assuming that you all had a conversation, and I guess this will be a question when the applicant comes up here to speak for it, but they were not willing to work with those costs, even though they were a bit greater to create--
Sorry, say that again?
Even though the costs were a bit greater to create that side, that front sidewalk, that they weren't able to do that. I guess this is a question for them. I'm going to leave it for now. That makes sense to me, except the power line's moving, but everything else makes sense to me. Then I have another question that is probably an anti-question. I have a vague concept of how traffic limitation would work. I think the applicant explained it during the, during the Planning Commission, well, so I like understand the concept, but I'm just curious, like, how it happens as a proffer, like, how the city follows up on that, how we are able to ensure that it's enforced.
Which type of proffer?
There was the traffic limitation at peak hours. Back to transit. Awesome, thanks.
Erling Thomas again, Transportation Review. So at the time of site plan, we would review the application to see what type of uses proposed, as well as the intensity, to determine the number of peak hour trips that are generated, and make sure that they are not exceeding it.
Okay, so it's done at site plan, and then that is, that's over. So it's just based on the predictive data, and that's that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my staff questions. Thanks.
Yes, Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. And, and, I'm sorry, just based on the comments and the questions, I just wanted to know, so if you were wheelchair-bound or stroller-bound, like, in this area, how would you navigate through that section?
Would you mind rephrasing that question?
Would you be in the street? Would you be in the street? Essentially, or is there like asphalt, like enough asphalt on the side of the road for you to at least walk or?
There's a 10-foot shared path along the frontage of Wake Forest Road, which would be used by all able bodies and disabled bodies.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I would now declare the public hearing open. Mr. Applicant, please be sure to give your information to the clerk before she did not receive it earlier.
Absolutely. Toby Coleman with.
How much time do you think you need?
I'm sorry?
How much time do you think you need?
Seven minutes.
All right, put 10 minutes on the clock, please.
So Toby Coleman with Smith Anderson, live here in Durham, 2702 Stewart Drive, and here on behalf of the developer, Redeeming Development Group. Apologies.
I'm gonna pause you for one moment. There's a, under that, where your hands are, you can press the button and lift it up so you can be closer to the mic. Yeah.
There we go.
That's for us.
All right.
For us tall folks.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of council. Again, Toby Coleman with Smith Anderson, here on behalf of the developer proposing this rezoning and annexation, Redeeming Development Group. With me today is David Blanton. Thank you for hearing us tonight. I was just gonna highlight a few things. I know most of y'all have already looked at this pretty extensively, and I know it's late. So, this is a, this is the second time y'all have seen this annexation and rezoning. You saw it last year on Tax Day, April 15th, and at that time it was denied five to two. One of the main reasons was is that this, this area is mixed-use development on the placetime map, and it didn't include retail in the initial proposal. So this is the new improved rezoning, and we have included some retail, non-residential, up to 10,000 square feet. That has pushed up the consistency. We've also, there was a proffer in the 2024 version, but we've kept that, so there's a 6% affordable. The traffic budget, which I'm happy to address, Councilor Cook, if you feel like you have any other questions. We've reduced residential density slightly, and we've added some environmental protections, which I will address. The end result, which we're pretty proud of, is we went from a unanimous recommendation of denial for the 2024 version of this rezoning to a seven to four recommendation of approval at Planning Commission. Here you can see some, I wanted to highlight some of the environmental conditions. So, one of the ones I do wanna proffer here, and staff has taken a look at this, is that in addition, we've currently got in the text commitments, a 100-year stormwater design. We wanna go ahead and also proffer that for erosion and sedimentation control measures, structures, and devices, they shall be so planned, designed, and constructed as to provide protection from the calculated maximum peak of runoff from the 100-year storm. So again, that's to basically require increased protections during erosion and sedimentation control, basically during construction. The northern portion, which I've highlighted here of the site, we're mainly undeveloped. It's about 12% of the property, and we've put a number of restrictions, so really there's very limited work that can be done there. We've, our text commitments increased the tree conservation and reduced impervious surface. And, you know, we've offered up green certification for the buildings, landscaping to use native plants. One of the things that we spent a lot of time on in this case, so one of them was obviously the school, the school discussion, which I'll get to in a minute. The other one was, you know, frankly, when we came, when we went to the neighborhood meetings, we asked the question of what can we do to address your concerns about erosion control and stormwater? And we ended up getting referred to Sound Rivers. We spent a lot of time talking with Sound Rivers, and the thing that we heard was they asked us to look at turbidity monitoring. I wasn't familiar with it. Y'all may be, but I just wrote this down. It's, turbidity is basically how much suspended matter is in the water reducing the light. It's basically a measure of clarity of the water. So I know y'all have heard about that a lot in this area. And so, the request was, can you do something to monitor the turbidity during construction? So we took a look at that. We spent a lot of time talking about that. Initially, for months, it was a discussion about can you monitor, just get some information? We ended up going to staff with Sound Rivers, county staff, because this is all a county thing. And we went to staff and we said, you know, we wanna look at potentially doing a turbidity text commitment. And around August, as we were starting to have these conversations, there started to be some sort of gaps between Sound Rivers and us about what we understood our discussion was. So we always understood it to be a monitoring question, because we don't know that much about turbidity. There's no, there's no guidelines in state law or county, in the county rules. This is not something that is currently monitored. We got asked by Sound Rivers, sort of as we started talking with staff, to set a limit and agree to a limit for turbidity, and that if, and that if we exceeded that limit, then we would do something about it. We, we started talking with, with county stormwater, and we started asking questions like, well, how does that work? How would you guys do it? What would be a limit that would make sense to you? You know, there was a proposal from Sound Rivers. And basically, the proposal from Sound Rivers, when we talked to the county about it, we said, well, if we're measuring turbidity coming out of the sediment control pipes, and we're trying to meet the standard, I think it was, it was 50, and I always forget the turbidity measurement units, but 50 turbidity measurement units, right? Just for reference sake. When I, when I asked, you know, how would that work, they said, if you could do that, we would come and study your site, because we would wanna know what you're doing. In other words, probably not feasible. And so we said, okay. And we just realized, we don't have the information. The experts need to, need to figure out what that standard is. Because right now, what North Carolina does is it, it sets a limit for turbidity in what are known as surface waters. Those are streams. Those are lakes. Those are rivers. Anything that's federally controlled by the Clean Waters Act. It's not what's coming out of a sediment control pond. What controls that is a separate state law, because the state generally controls sedimentation, and then they can delegate power down to localities, like Durham County has power delegated to it. And if you all recall, when Sound Rivers and others pushed for some additional requirements and more best, better best practices a couple of years ago, you guys actually had to go to the state and get it approved before you could enact them and enforce them. And so, we started talking about that. Number one, we said, we don't think we can set a limit, because we don't know what it would be. We don't know the standards, how we would do it. We're not the experts. We would need experts to do that. One of the other things that came up was, would we even be able, would we even be able to commit to something that could be enforceable? In other words, this is a question that hearkens back to, what, two, three hearings ago, right? And, you know, we always sort of thought, well, maybe we can, maybe we can't. We had been, there'd been some back and forth with Sound Rivers, or Sound Rivers said, you know, you really should commit to something, because if you're not, it's sort of meaningless. And where we ended up again was, well, we don't wanna give a meaningless thing. We wanna do something that's, you know, that actually has teeth to it, which is why we've committed to the 100-year erosion control, 100-year storm design for erosion control ponds. We came tonight, that being said, we came tonight ready to offer a turbidity, a proffer to measure turbidity as part of this. Not with a limit, because we don't know what that limit would be, but I had a proffer. We ran it by staff. Unfortunately, or, you know, however you wanna see it, when we ran it by staff, staff informed us that the county attorney does not believe that the county can enforce it under state law, for the reasons I just outlined, that it's delegated power, that currently the state does not regulate turbidity coming out of the pipes, and so there's no state authority to do that. So, I say that for what it's worth, recognizing what you guys did a few hearings ago. And so, you know, obviously there may be a discussion there. In terms of the school. So, here's the shared property line. There is some discussion that we just heard. We are going to build a 10-foot wide multi-use path, and I'm running out of time, so I'll try to, try to be brief. We were gonna build a path, we are going to build a path along the frontage of this development. The question was, is could we extend it to Neil Middle School? Could kids get to Neil Middle School? We went down the path of trying to figure out how to build a sidewalk. And to answer Councilor Cook's question, we basically got told, there's not a way to do that at, prior to Planning Commission, there's not a way to do that where any, where, you know, the county's not gonna maintain it and the city's not gonna maintain it. We were not involved in, in the discussions that apparently staff has had, but we do agree in the, just to the right of that sort of easternmost red line, sort of if you go down from the baseball diamond, there's a house there, and that's really the issue, as I understand it, is that there's a house that's very close to property line, likely because the property got taken in building the road. And as a result, it's really hard to get a 10-foot path past that. And so that's the issue. That's a practical issue. We've looked at a variety of other things. The part of the problem frankly is, is that school, if you go off of the roadway, for instance, if you go up into those woods and sort of hang a right on to, towards the sheriff's, there's a sheriff's office there below the baseball diamond, you run into encroachments on various properties, and you run into issues, and the school doesn't have a plan. And so we've really run into a point where we just, we don't have a lot of options. So, anyway, happy to answer questions, but wanted just to run through those things.
Thank you. I'm gonna start online. The first speaker I have is Samantha Cropp. Samantha, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you very much.
Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Samantha Cropp, and I'm speaking tonight in my role as Neuse Riverkeeper on behalf of the nonprofit Sound Rivers to voice our strong opposition to the Wake Olive apartment rezoning. Redeeming Development Group approached Sound Rivers early on, seeking input on enhanced protections for water quality, because this is within an impaired watershed. We expended significant staff time and resources to have these discussions, as the developer and its council claimed to understand that additional sediment and erosion control measures were necessary in this sensitive area. But after citing collaboration with our organization at the Planning Commission meeting to win their support, the developer cut off all communication with our team. Even after numerous attempts on our behalf to reach out, we received no follow-up nor explanation, with the silence for months. Ultimately, it became clear to Sound Rivers that RDF used our name and credibility to secure approval from Durham planning, with no intent to follow through on its commitment, which we see as a flagrant abuse of trust and deeply concerning for anyone who believes in transparency and accountability in the development process. Specifically, the turbidity sampling that we requested of Redeeming Development Group is not a fringe idea. It is explicitly recommended in the Environmental Protection Agency's 2022 Construction General Permit Guidelines for Developments. It has been adopted statewide in Virginia as a required practice for sensitive watersheds, and it is already an active rezoning condition in at least one development in Gaston County, North Carolina. Ultimately, this is a science-backed practice that offers transparency and accountability in a watershed, very much in need of these things. And Durham has the authority to adopt these. The Durham UDO explicitly allows rezoning applicants to proffer commitments that go beyond baseline requirements, and this includes stormwater and erosion control measures. Turbidity sampling is a simple, low-burden step that provides critical transparency and protects public water resources. There is no reason developers in Durham cannot commit to this condition, especially in a watershed as compromised as this one. Sound Rivers has worked for years to protect this watershed. We believe we are doing our part, but we do need your support to ensure responsible development and prevent further harm. I will note that we have stated numerous times in writing that we would be very grateful to see a commitment to simply sample the effluent coming out of the sediment basins for the sake of transparency, with no commitment to really do anything, even if the water is very dirty. Now, you know, ideally, we would like to see action taken, but simply being transparent and providing this much-needed data for the city of Durham would be a major step in this watershed. So, we would like to see Durham not reward developers who break trust.
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker I have online is Katie Ross. Ms. Ross, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome. You have three minutes.
Okay, I'll be quick. I just wanted to remind the council that the state, off the budget and management, projected that from the years 2020 to 2050, Durham would need between 60,000 and 66,000 new housing units to accommodate any increase in population, counting units already built since 2020, under construction, and already approved by yourself or by administratively within the planning department. The entire 66,000 units that were projected to be needed over 30 years has already been accommodated. There is no urgency here. And also, the, I think you should consider, maybe have some experts come in and talk about the changing economic condition, that maybe all that influx of population isn't gonna be coming, because a lot of the jobs that we're gonna be here are not here, thanks to, well, thanks to our federal government. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now I will move to our in-person speakers. I'm gonna call everyone up, and you determine your order. Donna Standback, Pam Andrews, Tina Motley Pearson, Tammy Swaya, and Wanda Allen.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Andrews, Wake Forest Highway. There were a number of environmental monitoring commitments promised to the Planning Commission to work with Sound Rivers, like sampling the effluent, which the state of Virginia requires and the EPA highly recommends. Here's the document from the state of Virginia. Using sediment bags is also suggested, seeding in shorter time periods, reducing impervious surface to less than 50%. All buffers should be undisturbed around these creeks and the wetlands. Other issues are that it's not a 15-minute neighborhood. There's no continuous sidewalk, folks. Pedestrian crossings, will these actually even exist? No Durham or NC DOT improvements are planned in this area. Maintaining the proper RB zoning infrastructure just does not meet the demand there. This is the highest density in the area of 17.270. Apartment vacancy rates are at 12.25%, we checked. Over 166 accidents have occurred in this short intersection in the last five years. Traffic increased out here in 2021 to 2023, 17%. Normal growth is 3% or less. Committing to no blasting. Our family's home place is 400 feet away from this. Next. Establish strict environmental monitoring, which the EPA recommends and Virginia requires, as promised. Sample dewatering effluent, as promised. Construct the erosion control basis for temporary and permanent ponds, which he agreed to, that's wonderful, as promised at planning. We are in a sediment pollution crisis. Mask grading, blasting, inadequate erosion control is causing sediment pollution in our most vulnerable environmental-sensitive areas. The creek and the wetlands on this site should be protected, using stricter standards reached in the recent lawsuit agreement. Present standards are just not enough. Next. Wake Olive needs to adhere to the added measures reached in the Mongo Home Settlement, so history doesn't repeat itself. Stop sediment pollution by stabilizing exposed soils and using stricter erosion and sediment control measures. Higher impervious surfaces equals more sediment pollution. Next. Sediment is the leading cause of water pollution in the state. The effects of sediment pollution can persist in stream beds long after the construction stops. The destruction of habitat can affect water quality, aquatic life, and wildlife long term. If Virginia can require this and can do this and gas. wildlife long term. If Virginia can require this and can do this, and Gastonia can do this, the EPA recommends it, then so can we. We passed an amendment tonight for some beautiful people. We can do better for Durham, folks. And I'm just going to say, this parcel was originally purchased by my mother and my aunts to help build a sanctuary, and it never came to fruition. It has special meaning to me. I just want to see the land used wisely. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Wanda Allen, and my name is, and my address is on record. You'll see here, Slide number six, we need this project to be limited to no more than 50% impervious surface. Anything higher, such as proposed 67.5, exceeds what the watershed can handle and should not be warranted. The level of impervious surface will worsen the flooding, erosion, and water quality problems already existing in this area. Impervious surfaces, roofs, roads, and parking lots, don't let the rainwater soak in. That means more runoff, more sediment, and more pollution in our creeks and lakes. By contrast, impervious lands such as forest and grass absorbs the rainforest and replenishes the groundwater and releases water slowly back into the stream. This 12-acre project needs 50% cap to prevent additional downstream damage. The plan, the plan that is presented tonight, says there will be no building in the buffer, but that's already a law, you guys. There are 1,845 feet of wetland and creek on this property. This plan still allows construction ponds and grading when those within those buffers, which is where the real damage starts. We're asking for a clear commitment of zero disturbance within these environmental sensitive areas. No construction ponds, no tree removal, no stormwater devices, and no utilities. That's how we protect our creeks and our taxpayers from costly further cleanup. Finally, this rezoning increases density within an infrastructure that has not been provided. There is a reason this area was zoned rural residential. Changing it to RB increases the impervious surfaces and strain on the schools, roads, and the environment. Only 8.8% of Durham County remains zoned RB. Each upzoning erases how low-impact land and adds long-term cost, long-term cost that we as the taxpayers are paying. Please follow the adopted plan and evaluate the cumulative impact, the cumulative impact, and protect our environment.
Good evening. My name is Tina Motley-Person, and my address is on file. The comprehensive plan is not being met for this development. Three out of 29 selected policies do not meet the comprehensive plan, and seven out of 29 comprehensive plan policies identified by planning will be met at site plan, therefore they are automatically given credit. Current and future irreversible environmental impacts must be thoroughly assessed for this area. In its current configuration, the proposed neighborhood would exist in isolation and fail to provide adequate connectivity to nearby public, open spaces, parks, or other communal areas. This lack of integration could negatively affect both ecological continuity and community accessibility. This development is not within a 15-minute safe, walkable distance of stores, jobs, or businesses, no parks. There are no proposed continuous sidewalks or bike lanes in the area. The site is not contiguous. This does not fit in with the existing community character. There are no walkable businesses in the area. The nearest transit route is two miles west. This is car-centric on an already over-capacity highway, and if you add it all together, this development is just another example of urban sprawl. Slide. There is no pedestrian crosswalk. Will NC DOT or the city approve this? Why, and this hasn't been verified? There's no proposed pedestrian signal at the intersection either. The nearest public park is 3.7 miles away. Slide. There are no committed continuous sidewalks to amenities, churches, or school from the apartments. NC98 Sharon Road does not meet ADA requirements. Bike and ped wanted a highly visible crosswalk with push-button pedestrian signals on both sides of this intersection. Is the developer going to commit to that? Slide. Actually, I'm just going to go to the end because that's an important, the last one I'm going to do. Okay. So let me draw your attention to the red circle drawn on southeast Durham in this graphic. In this area, there are over 20,000 new dwelling units approved. This is an additional 46,400 people, which is the population of Wilson, added to this one area, and it doesn't even include the existing population. There's 68 subdivisions under construction or built out in the last four years in these four creek basins. Since 2020, there have been over 22,000 dwellings approved, 5,600 acres rezoned, over 51,000 additional residents, and over 178,000 additional vehicles per day. We are busting at the seams. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Donna Stanback. My address is on file. We are already having crashes near Wake Olive between the intersections of NC98 and Sharon Road and Neil Middle School. We've had 166 within five years in seven tenths of a mile. The traffic congestion congestion accidents have increased significantly and can double with the increased population that is under construction and/or that has been approved. Next slide. Out of the 12-hour day, we have heavy congestion and significant delays as on these graphs that show the red line going from one end to the other. And and this is for 4.5 hours of the day. Out of those 12, we have that. And the morning peak hour traffic per the NC DOT is from 7:30 to 9:00. The star on these charts or slides are the Wake Olive apartment, and they are right there at the Olive Branch Road entrance. So all these diagrams show how bad it is. We have seven miles per hour in these areas. And in the current level of service for two of the nearby intersections is Level F. What is, you know, all these increases will just put us way over the top already. And then in the afternoon, the peak hour traffic is 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. per the NC DOT. I have actually monitored and a couple of the other members last week. My first job was a traffic counter, so I'm familiar with how you do this and show. I hope these slides tell the story. We request our Durham leaders to push for improvements to 98 with the situation the way it is now. We are over capacity already. Part of it was caused by the new school, that charter school that got approved right up at Kemp Road, and that's where some of the red ends for 1,250 students, and they're at capacity. So that didn't even go through any planning per se process. Now, if you look, the, thank you, on the apartment vacancy rate for Durham now is at 12%. That's per Lee and Associates. The Lick and Little Creek basins are dense with 49 dense developments under construction. Per the red dots and the yellow rectangles are the apartments. Twenty-two more are approved and pending construction. 44% are townhomes and 22% are apartments. Thank you.
Those are all of my speakers. Mister applicant, would you like to, oh, I'm so sorry.
I'm bringing them home. Okay.
You were, you were stuck on the slide roll tonight. Sorry. Go ahead.
That's right. Yeah. Tammy Suaya, my address is on file. We, I want to reiterate, we want no commit to blasting. Tragic basin soil is different, and you'll see here on July 1st, we had a blast at Solana, and it was felt 1.3 miles away in the last two months. At the utility that they're making at Kemp Road, there was a blast that was felt less than one and a half miles away. Blasting in tragic basin soil is different, so we don't want any blasting. The emergency services in southeast Durham are not adequate. I know the policy 119 says that no new developments, and then the urban growth boundary should be established unless there's sufficient emergency services. Well, I live out there. I know your, your data may show something, but the people that live out there, it's not adequate. Station 8 does not have a ladder truck. Station 17 has a ladder truck, but then you've got RTP 3.0, and this ladder truck, ladder truck may move to the, the new fire station that's going to be built for RTP 3.0 when it's approved. There's no, no new fire stations approved or in the capital improvement plan for southeast Durham. So I'm going to give you some examples of some recent, just the last few weeks, of some issues in Durham. There was a fire in North Metal Springs Road, and you'll see there were like nine units that had to respond. There was two ladder trucks, Station 17 and Station 2, that was needed. And I want to point out to the bottom picture here that the fireman had to put a ladder to go up to the, to the roof, and that puts our firefighters at risk. The family lost everything here. If we had more adequate ladder trucks and, and fire people, would have been a different outcome. Also want to point out, even though this is at Northern High School, that there was a situation where a student was fainting in and out of consciousness, and there was no EMS responders available. And there was three requests from law officers for help. I mean, we've got an EMS crisis here in Durham. And lastly, there was a car break-in in Olive Branch Road, and you'll see that the closest police station is 5.68 miles away. The time it took for the police to respond to this break-in was 17 minutes. There's no new police stations planned. We've got 51,000 more new residents coming here. We're at a crisis here. Public safety. Just think about the cumulative impact, and I appreciate, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. Those are all the speakers I have. Mister applicant, do you have any response to anything you heard?
Just a couple of items. Again, we came prepared to offer a turbidity condition similar to what was outlined by Ms. Crop, but we're told by, again, that the county attorney said it wasn't enforceable. Again, you know, that may be something to be discussed by council. The, we are providing crosswalks on both sides of Olive Branch Road. That's in the tax commitments. We are, we did reduce what could be put within the sort of green space area, the area where there's no construction. The only things that can be put there under the current conditions are greenway trails and stormwater conveyances. So not ponds, just conveyances. So the retaining walls, everything else, you know, that, that's not, that is not consistent with what's currently in front of you. So I just wanted to add those two things.
Thank you. All right, those are all my speakers. I'll now declare the public hearing closed and back before the council. You know what? Councilmember Freeman, I'm going to start to my right tonight. I'll give you a break, Councilmember Coed.
I was just going to ask if Ms. Crop could be made available. I was trying to hear the last part of her comment before she was cut off.
Hello.
Ms. Crop, you were, you were finna, you were saying, hold on, I'm going back to my note. You were talking about sample of effluency, and, and then I think you got cut off in a compromised watershed. Yeah.
Sure. Should elaborate just a little bit. There are pretty robust guidelines laid out by the Environmental Protection Agency in their 2022 Construction Bureau Permit, which includes the methodology of doing the turbidity sampling of the discharge coming out of sediment basins. It also includes a few options for, what they're calling benchmarks, so numbers that would indicate that the turbidity is too high. And so those benchmarks are actually not 50, as the applicant has stated. That is the surface water standard for public waterways. The EPA provides a range which include 150 as an option. But again, there's options there. I was also stating that I had articulated that it would simply be sufficient in our eyes to just do the sampling. As a matter of transparency, it would also benefit the city of Durham to have that data to show what's coming out of these pipes and getting into surface waterways. That would be incredibly useful. And finally, we did offer to contract with the developer to do that sampling for them as a third alternative. So none of those options were taken up by the developer.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I just had a question for staff. I guess, in an annexation such as this one being presented this evening, is it customary to rely on the county if we're, if, if the plan is to annex into the city?
Sure. Great question. It really depends on the context of the proffers that are made within the development plan. So one of the things that we look at, one of the first questions is whether or not a commitment is enforceable. And part of that question goes into who does that. And so this question lies with stormwater, stormwater and erosion control. That's within the county. So that's how they are involved with that question.
And I know we have a special guest here who could answer my next question. Ms. Wolf, if you'd mind. Just help me out. Help me understand, nor the city or nor the county have a regulation in place around turbidity. And how would, how would Gastonia and Virginia both have it? And what would need to be the steps we take to get to it? That's it.
Michelle Wolf, with Environmental and Street Services. So the city doesn't have standards. The state has standards. And the state does have a turbidity standard that applies to all waters of the state of North Carolina. So that does exist. The turbidity standard is, is a little different than probably Virginia's is, although I haven't gone to look it up. North Carolina's standard has, is two parts. It's a numeric standard that says that turbidity shall not exceed 50. NTUs was what he was looking for. That's how turbidity is measured in NTUs. And then there's a narrative part to that standard. So the narrative is where it usually gets caught up into, it gets caught up and it's not necessarily enforceable. So the narrative standard has two parts to it, and one of it says that turbidity shall not be increased over background turbidity. There is no definition of what background turbidity is, and state agencies and local governments have run around circles on that for most of my career. The second half of that is that if the, if the site that's under construction is meeting all of the requirements of their erosion and sediment control plan, which is what the county issues, then which is what the county issues, then they are not deemed to be out of compliance, period. It doesn't matter what's happening in the stream. So that standard is just very difficult to enforce against. It's very easy to measure. It's just very difficult to enforce against.
Okay. And so if the city were to identify the background standard as the effluent, would that fit for this scenario?
So the city doesn't have authority to set standards. We can set benchmarks.
Okay.
We couldn't enforce against that, though.
But if they set a benchmark and the testing or the monitoring was just kind of data? And if the benchmark was above it, they would report? Is that something that your office could receive?
That's a good question. I think I would throw that to the attorney's office and to the manager. I'm not sure.
And mainly if it were over the 50, essentially? The 50?
So the 50 would be in the stream, though.
Okay, in the stream.
If it's coming out of the pipe, which is what the Neuse River Keeper Samantha Crop was describing, that doesn't have a number.
So if it was 150?
So if we used 150 as a benchmark? I mean, I don't know if we could, I suppose we could receive it. I don't know that we would do anything other than put it in a file.
Exactly. That's all. Okay. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Russ.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Once again, thanks to the folks from Preserve Real Durham. You're so dedicated, come out here all the time. I'm trying to think of a name for you all. You're not the dynamic duo, not the magnificent seven, but the fantastic five or whatever. Thank you. And we understand your concerns about development pressures in your area and some of the concerns about environmental impacts. We hear that every time. I appreciate your sharing that. I also want to thank staff. I want to thank Michelle Wolf, who is like my go-to expert in all things water-related. Michelle and I are gonna be up 9:30 tomorrow morning with you and RBA talking about rules. So like, it seems like water all the time. I just had a, so just a couple of comments. So I do appreciate the applicant coming back after the earlier hearing when we said we want to see commercial. We appreciate you coming back with commercial. That's, we appreciate that change. We also appreciate the 6% affordable. We need more. We talked about this tonight, more affordable housing. So appreciate that. Do appreciate you also treating this, the water. You've added the sort of like, not only 100-year storm post-construction, but also during construction. Appreciate that. And also there's a green certification piece, I think all good. I just have two concerns and questions. So the first one, we heard concerns about walkability. So is there, if you'd come up, so is, I know you've looked at all the different angles here around like, seems like along the front, it doesn't work. But is there, is there an option here to make that connection to Neil Middle School? If the school were to be amenable to that, is that something you've considered?
We did, so there, if you look at the sort of eastern panhandle of this property, again, it sort of goes up into some woods. And it could theoretically, somebody on the bike and PED committee sort of literally just drew with pen, you know, here's a potential path that could happen.
Those are my crazy colleagues on BPAC. They're always there. Yeah.
And so we took a look at that. And we talked with schools about that. And I know staff has as well. And, you know, basically where it comes out is here, is, as I said, schools don't have a plan. They don't know where that path could be, or even if that path could be built. As I said, there's some encroachment from a neighboring property, some stuff going on to the school property. The driveway where you'd probably want, there's a fence on the north of the sheriff's office. There's a driveway where maybe you could run a path, but it looks like it may encroach on some adjoining property. It's a lot of complications. So we couldn't build because there's no plan to build on the school property. And we just don't, we don't know what it is. We don't know what we'd be committing to. You know, if, again, you know, we did consider and talk about, you know, could there be an easement that's proffered? And, you know, if that's something that council wants to consider, I'm working with my client. Yeah, I mean, we could, I could read out, I could offer up a proffer for an easement. Basically, what that would be, would be a, you know, basically what we propose is, you know, prior to issuance of first certificate of occupancy, property owner would grant a 30-foot pedestrian easement to provide a pedestrian connection between the 10-foot shared path on the north side of NC 98 and the property shared lot line with Neil Middle School. And the easement would be consented to by Durham Public Schools Administration. And, but unless it's consented to by the property owner, the easement shall be located no more than 100 feet from the property shared lot line with 5337 Wake Forest Highway, which is the property immediately to the east. The idea there is that we don't want it going too far over. That doesn't make any sense for the school. It also doesn't make any sense frankly for the developer. This is, the portion of where there would be the easement is not, is currently going to be tree conservation area. So this would be an area that isn't going to be developed otherwise.
So we appreciate that. I hope, want to make sure staff got, has that language. Appreciate that proffer.
Yes, staff has the language.
Yeah. I've given them the language. Okay. Oh, good, good. Thank you. Appreciate that. So then the second thing is about this issue of the sampling the water. So I know that, I know there's been a lot of conversations about that. Appreciate Samantha Crop's concerns on her end from Sound Rivers. So it sounds like, it sounds like what, and again, you've done the 100-year storm post-construction, also during construction. It sounds like Sound Rivers, from what I heard from Ms. Crop's comments, is like, they'd be grateful just for a commitment to sampling, simply. And so I know that, and I know that the county has said, like, we can't enforce a proffer to sample. But as you referenced earlier, we've had an earlier hearing about doing things that we can't always enforce, but having those sort of on the books. So I'm just curious whether you'd be willing to commit to some kind of sampling, even though we know we can't enforce it. We know that happens sometimes, as a way to demonstrate both good faith, but also to build the base of knowledge that we have about, about water coming from sediment basins being discharged, so.
Sure. So two things. First, I want to make sure, because in some jurisdictions, you literally, if staff says you can't, you can't. I just want to make sure and double-check with staff. I can make this proffer even though the county is concerned it's not enforceable. I don't want to do anything that's, you know, off the reservation.
I'll just put on the record that Sarah Young with the Planning Department, that if the proffer is made and the county still feels uncomfortable, it would just not be enforceable.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure on that. So I do have a proffer, you know, again, we came ready actually to go ahead and offer this, and then this issue came up at the last minute.
Can you speak a little clearer into your mic?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Hopefully this helps. The, one thing I want to, I'll read out the proffer in a second. One thing I want to make clear, because it wasn't clear to me frankly, until I started asking a lot of questions from the county stormwater folks. So as I understand it, and I am sure that there's people who can correct me if I get anything wrong. The way that stormwater, and this is in the UDO, the way that erosion control works is that there is a monthly or so inspection by the county. And what they look at, they look around the site, what they look at is what are known as self-inspections. So there's a record of self-inspections that are done according to the UDO on a certain basis. And those self-inspections are maintained by the site, maintained by the developer. And that's where, you know, they're going around and looking at everything. And that's really, in my conversations with the county, that seemed to be the place where we would put that information if we're gonna put it anywhere. Because there's not a document currently that the county collected, that you send in, that you say, I've done this sample, or I've done this thing, I'm gonna send it over. And so just for that context, that's why we've done what we've done. So here's the proffer. And again, I have sent this to staff. A measurement of turbidity shall be taken at the outflow of each sediment basin or trap within one week of any sedimentation and erosion control self-inspection. The turbidity measurement results shall be included in the self-inspection documentation once such results become available. Consistent with applicable state rules, compliance with any surface water turbidity standards established by the state shall be de-met when work on the property is consistent with the approved sedimentation and erosion control plan. So again, that last sentence is really just consistent with what the state law says, or state regulations say. And I put in that sort of buffer around the week. I don't, as I understand it, a lot of the self-inspection is done by somebody on site. The turbidity testing, as I understand it, would be done by sort of a third-party contractor. That's why I wanted to provide some leeway there. And I don't know, I frankly don't know how long it takes to get these results. It may be immediate, it may not be. So that's why I wanted to put, you know, we'll put it in the self-reports once it becomes available. And again, it's just, there's not any examples to go by. I mean, there's this one, you know, again, we talked with Samantha. Samantha gave us some information from Virginia. There's an EPA construction book. In trying to write zoning conditions, we didn't see a whole lot of examples. So we're working a little bit from a blank page here.
I appreciate that. Again, I want to make sure staff have record of, okay, that's good. Yeah. Yeah. So we've asked a lot of you. I appreciate that you've been willing to sort of flex this and sort of respond to the concerns. So I really appreciate that. I think this is a, to me, this is, yeah, this is the kind of thing we do in Durham. We sort of like, we find ways to meet the concerns of residents around a whole range of issues and to meet our goals for housing and so forth. So I really appreciate this. I'll be supporting this project. Thank you.
And just following up, did you have anything in your folder about blasting?
We don't. Yeah, so on blasting, the issue is just, we haven't done the geotechnical work to know. However, you know, as we've told the neighbors, the way that this site falls, the expectation is it's actually going to be what's known as a fill site and not a removal site. And so as a result, it's less likely there will be blasting, just because, you know, it's gonna be more adding dirt. But again, we haven't done enough to know whether there will be blasting. So we just haven't, aren't able to commit to say, absolutely no blasting.
And would that fill be for a different type of soil than the Triassic's, like clay?
I mean, you have to, I'll let David talk to the soils issue.
David, I'm with the developer. I'm sorry, I didn't catch the question.
The fill that you would use, would it be?
Oh, yeah, it wouldn't be, I mean, yeah, it wouldn't be tarasic. It would be like, you know, it would get tested by a third party as we fill and compact every set number of inches. So it wouldn't be the kind of plasticky sort of clay that you get sometimes out here.
Okay.
Councilmember Cook.
Thank you. Yeah. Come forward with that binder, the folder. Love to see it. Okay, I want to follow up on a few things that were asked about in the planning commission. And I want to thank my colleagues, because the turbidity piece was on my list as well. You were asked about a commitment to minimum commercial. Are y'all able to make a commitment to that amount tonight?
I could sort of answer, yeah. I mean, we didn't contemplate a minimum. The plan has always been to do it. And we work with site plans that sort of realize the yield around 10,000 square feet. It's tough to commit to a minimum without really knowing the future user. So the idea was to just preserve that front part of the parcel for commercial. But there wasn't like a minimum necessarily contemplated.
Yeah, I mean, I, it just, it feels like y'all spent all this time to come back before us with this commercial piece, which feels really important, but the only thing you've given us is a maximum. So technically, 0% would still be within what you've provided. So I just want to make sure that we know that we're gonna get commercial.
Okay.
So is there some way that y'all can make a commitment to that? Do you think I'm wrong about that?
I mean, I can't, I mean, I can think of, I could throw out a square footage number, if that's sort of what you're after. Or are you sort of thinking, did you have something else in mind?
And that's fine, or if you wanted to say, like, there will be some commercial and we have a maximum, but we are committed to having some commercial.
Yeah, I think we'd be fine saying something, you know, I don't have language, obviously. But I think we'd be fine committing to there being a commercial component to it. If you're comfortable with that, I think we're comfortable getting our sort of heads around that.
How do we feel, friends?
We would need some quantifiable measure of the non-commercial space in order to have a minimum.
Okay. Do you need any other, any language other than that, just some kind of minimal number?
Yeah, you can either combine it with your text amendment that states the maximum, sort of, or do a separate commitment for a minimum amount of non-commercial uses.
Yeah, understood. Okay.
And we can work with you on that, that language. But the number would need to be committed tonight.
Do y'all want to work on that? I have more questions, if you want to think about it.
Why don't you go with the questions and David will work on that.
Okay. There was a question about, and I know y'all answered that you had to maybe run all of the scenarios, but there was a question about what it would look like to have 30% tree coverage. And I'm curious if y'all looked into that. And I feel like...
Not, no.
Okay. The reason I'm asking this question is that I feel like we've got, we've got this traffic modification and we've got the height limitations, which feel like they're sort of decreasing density or I guess they're like, they're forcing a little bit more sprawl, right? As opposed to having more tree coverage and higher buildings. And so I just want to ask again, if y'all are interested in increasing the tree coverage. I understand the reasons for the rest of it, but it does feel like we've been sort of handicapped a little bit into low density at this point, but also lesser environmental protections. You see what I'm saying?
I do to a point, I mean, the money side of it is this, that if, you know, when you build up, you know, costs go higher, you need more structured parking. And so that's a lot of the reason why we have not looked at 30% is because it would be more difficult to fit the needed surface parking on the site and things like that. And again, with things like the, you know, an easement and a potential, while that's a small thing, you know, all those little, little sort of additional items of impervious surface, like a future greenway on the eastern portion where we're gonna put tree conservation area, that, you know, you have limit, you know, when you take out a small piece, that impacts, you know, tree conservation area overall. So I think that is not something we'd be able to do at this point.
Okay. In the future, I feel like in these environmentally sensitive areas, the lessening of the footprint feels like the thing to do. And I think where it's interesting, kind of, I think where a lot of us sort of combine up here is that we are looking for density. And I feel like we're getting locked into this like sort of low to mid-density developments. So it's just something to think about as y'all are looking in this, specifically in this area of like minimizing the footprint, but also increasing the density so that we don't just have this sprawl. And then I think that the units are all gonna be for rent. Is that still?
Yes.
Okay. Have y'all considered at any point in time in any other projects or this one, having any sort of co-management for rental units?
I'm not sure I follow when you say that.
To have any, any sort of tenant-managed units, as opposed to having a rental company?
I mean, that is not, you know, generally who owns the property is different, is, you know, may not be the same people that entitle the property. So it's, and there's some limits on things like ownership structure. So I'm not like, you know, you can't regulate, in zoning, you can't regulate, for instance, for rent or, you know, ownership. So I don't know if, I've never thought about whether the management structure of an apartment could be regulated by zoning. I don't know if staff has.
I think it could be, yeah, in the same way that you could regulate the affordability. So anyway, just something to...
That's a different question, and I'm not sure it's legal either.
Just something to, okay. Covenants run, oh, whatever, we don't have to get into a legal debate. I've already had enough of those tonight. Just something to think about in the future.
Understood.
And then when you have that number, we're willing to hear it. Thanks.
Yeah, we were laying out the parcels at like 2,500 square feet. So we could commit to 2,500 minimum square footage of commercial, but maximum of 10, if that works for staff.
We have that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baker.
Good morning, everyone.
Have we crossed that line?
Yes.
Oh, man.
Half an hour ago.
About 30 minutes ago.
Oh, wow.
I'll note that two of our four cases tonight were originally rejected and have come back and are... and are better than when they originally came to us, and I think that's important. I've got one, I've got a couple of questions, actually, for staff. Do you have readily available, just kind of high-level, some of the key differences between the original case and this case?
Yeah, the main thing is there were a few more apartment units and no commercial component whatsoever.
Can you say that again, Mr. Lester?
Yeah, sorry. The two main components, or the two main differences, is the one, a couple of years ago, was a completely apartment proposal, no non-commercial uses. This one has, I don't know the exact number, but there are reduced number of units for apartments. But the range of, actually, the range of uses is expanded in terms of housing type. The other main thing is the commercial component, which pretty much made this consistent with the MUN place type. So, and then there's some of the graphic commitments didn't come over to the textual development plan, but those were minor in my opinion.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. And I appreciate the commitment to a minimum commercial, 2,500. Can you, staff, can you all confirm that there will be, that the block length requirements or connectivity requirements in the unified development ordinance will be applicable to this case?
Correct. Yeah, there will be a western stubout required, based on the intensity of the PDR district and the fact that that western parcel to this site is undeveloped. So they'll have to put a stubout, at least one.
In accordance with the...
In accordance with the connectivity standard.
The connectivity requirements, okay, and the block length. Okay, awesome. And then regarding the connection to the school, at this point, because there's a lot of connection, there's a lot of abutting to the school property, the only connection at this point is a potential access easement?
Yeah. Again, because we just don't know if and when the school would do this. We literally brought this to the school. This was something, you know, one of the differences frankly was that this was, this has been sort of a point of conversation. I think this time around, we spent a lot more time trying to get the school to really think, the school system to really think through it, and they've been a good partner with us on that. But, you know, we really focused initially on the sidewalk option, in part because, and I, I don't have my presentation up, but in part because when we were initially looking at this, we were looking more at, how would you build a path, not from the multi-use path, but rather from the development over to the school? And ultimately, that was rejected because it was coming in, basically in the back of the school property. And I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but it's a middle school. You know, a path going into the woods out of the back of a field is probably not the greatest idea. So.
I get that. It is a very large property apartment with a lot of, the parcel abutting a school and no way to get from all of this land to the schools, to staff, to the planning department. Did you all have any conversations with the school district about potential connections?
Sure. The main, I guess, dialogue was between the applicant and Durham Public Schools. We provided potential language if, if any agreement could be done for a passageway between the two. But that was sort of the extent of, you know, our role in that.
Yeah. I see like, one of, one of the great opportunities here is, you know, amidst, and this is in the context of all of Southeast Durham, which I am extremely concerned about and I see as a major failure and lack of planning in Southeast Durham that has gotten us to this point with enormous cumulative impacts and perhaps our city's greatest environmental catastrophe. In that context, we do have still parcel-by-parcel kind of cases coming forward. And I see an asset of this one, or potential benefit of this one, is that it is directly next to a school. And here we are, and there's no connection to the school. I see huge opportunity, apartments next to a school, and there's no connection to the school. So, I see that as concerning. And then I do just want to say, I do want to speak to the issue with Sound Rivers and just the communication with Sound Rivers and the frustration that that nonprofit, very respected environmental nonprofit, that recently settled a lawsuit in the air with the developer to address onsite issues, as well as get the developer to buy property offsite to protect the watershed, and does a lot of really critical work in that area, and their frustration with the communication. That's disappointing. And at the same time, these two commitments that were made tonight are extremely important. They're big. What you just committed to tonight, I wish they, we could have seen them earlier, but also I don't think we have seen these two commitments together. And I hope that we can expect that from future developers. So I do want to say kudos on those two commitments tonight. Those are really important. So, appreciate the improvements that we've seen to this case. For me, as Southeast Durham has seen the enormous amount of annexations and rezoning cases and development over the past several years, our need for better planning to make up for what has happened out there grows. And for me, the floor grows as well. So, I do think this is, compared to many of the cases that we've seen over the past several years, definitely on the better side of the cases that we've seen. Many of my concern, some of my concerns still remain, particularly around connection to the school and a couple of other things. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCovey, your turn.
I just wanted to say thank you. I was one of the council members who really wanted to see that connection to the school. It made a lot of sense. I understand why. There's limitations. I think that that's, I mean, staff has been pretty clear, there are a lot of places that we have sidewalk gaps. The reason that we have a sidewalk gap is because it's going to be really hard to build it. That the easy places are kind of done. So I think that that's essentially what y'all ran into, and the idea of burying all those power. I mean, I don't even want to know what the cost would be to do that. So I, it's lamentable, but also understandable. And I don't plan on holding it against y'all. There was a valiant effort made. And I really appreciate staff for getting into this maintenance side, saying that that wasn't what was the limitation. Because that was something I had asked very clearly. I was like, well, if it's a maintenance thing, let's just do a swap. I mean, like, we got to figure this out already. So I do want to appreciate staff for also digging in on that issue. I know that there wasn't resolution, but I hope that the work done between the city and the county can get us to, because this has come up before, right? Need a little bit of, a little piece of a thing, it's going to connect you to something major, it's really going to help. And then this kind of running in between city and county, and residents don't want to hear it. They just want to walk down the sidewalk. So, I hope that that, those lessons learned for city and county staff can be applied to other projects because it's certainly come up. Appreciate the piece around the commercial. You know, sometimes the place type map, you know, we were told when we passed the comprehensive plan, it's not going to get it 100% right because rezoning is very specific to a site versus what the comp plan does, which is more macro. But it made a lot of sense to me because it is a good distance to Sharon Road. It is a good distance to being able to walk anything commercial. I drove it today. I will say I was very pleased to see, you know, that light at Kemp Road. It is actually improving traffic. And that wouldn't have happened without some of the development there. And I saw some other road improvements, I guess around Triple Crown. That was not a case that I voted for, but was happy to see the turnout lanes and some of the other improved infrastructure. So I get residents' concerns, but I also am seeing some pretty important infrastructure improvements that would not have happened without those development cases, and it is actually making that road safer. Thank you. That's all.
Mayor Broden. Sure.
I had one more question. Sorry. The 6% is great, same number as the last time. Are y'all interested in increasing that at all?
I think we're going to stay at 6%. I don't think we've...
Even, even at like, something like 100% AMI?
100% AMI.
100% AMI?
I think, I think they're going to stick at 6%. I think that's what they've sort of figured everything out.
Do you want to tell us what else is in your folder?
What else? That's it. You saw it.
Okay, thank you.
I've read everything that is in my folder.
All right. Thank you all so much. I am not going to share any comments. Ready to go home at 12:40 a.m. All right. Colleagues, thank you for your commentary. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance annexing Wake Olive into the city of Durham and to authorize the city manager to enter into a utility extension agreement with Redeeming Development Group LLC.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. I promise I voted this time. Ah, there we go. Thank you. Please close the vote.
The motion passes 5 to 2 with councilmembers Freeman and Baker voting no.
Yep. Next, I'll entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the unified development ordinance by taking property out of residential rule, residential suburban 20 Falls-Jordan watershed overlay District B, county jurisdiction, and establishing the same as planned development residential 17.270 Falls-Jordan watershed overlay District B city jurisdiction.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
The motion passes 5 to 2 with councilmembers Baker and Freeman voting no.
Thank you. And lastly, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consistency statement as required by North Carolina General Statute, Section 160D-605.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. One more. There we go. Please close the vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We, colleagues, we are adjourned at 12:43.